Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting this Monday, January the 6th at 7:04 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yes.
Macy Brown.
Here.
Ms. Speaker.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Redaniel.
Yes.
And Terry.
Thank you.
We already have the first question.
You're ready?
So I think, yeah, you did like this.
A lot of times it seems you're just, because it's hard to get.
It's actually just fine. But it's okay, it's not gonna fix it. That's not what I'm laboring over. It's because it's been a month since I messaged this thing. So I think, no, it's all right. Just when it's time to play, I think you push that. What does that say on the back? Here.
Oh, that's it.
Push it like this. And then a little red dot. And this one's already recording, but...
Good, that's fine, that's what I do.
But it's fine.
Okay. I don't know where we're gonna, I think we're all back at my stand. Yeah, it's gonna take that, this one's gonna take it. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, it makes a stretch, but it should.
Well, we went to one point, we said, we got some things. You want that? No. This one should do it. Here, if I can, operate, here, operate, okay, right now. Okay.
Olive oil.
She passed them on, everybody on there. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting this Monday, January the 6th at 7:04 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yes. Macy Brown.
Here.
Ms. Speaker.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Redaniel.
Here.
And Terry.
Here.
And Dennis.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would please rise at this time, we will have our prayer led by Pastor Jeff Ivey from First Baptist in Greenwood, and then we'll end with our pledge of allegiance by Chief Stewart.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this City Council Meeting this Monday, January the 6th at 7:04 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yes. Macy Brown.
Here.
Ms. Speaker.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Redaniel.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Thank you, and at this time in our agenda, we have the recognitions and acknowledgements. We are very fortunate to have a couple of those tonight. I would ask that Mr. Xander Molina come forward, please, if you don't mind. Now, he told me he was not shy, and I told him I was, so we tried to get through this the best that we could, right?
Right.
Okay. So it was brought to my attention by a couple of folks, actually, more than a couple of folks, about this young man's dedication to his neighborhood, to his yard, if you will, to neighbors' yards, I think his grandmother, does your grandmother live close?
Yes.
We cross the street?
Yeah.
Okay. So this young man has done an excellent job, and I was trying to come up with the right word a while ago, and he is just an asset to his community, his neighborhood, and certainly to the city of Greenwood. And we like to make sure that we recognize folks like you at a time like this, if that's okay. And we just appreciate everything you do. And I did get to drive by, you took him down way too soon, because I didn't get any pictures, I don't know if you got any pictures, but he had an excellent Christmas display up in his yard, I know you worked hard on that.
Yes.
And then I noticed that you do an outstanding job at landscaping all around, and even cleaning up for us, and not just your yard, but other yards. If we could all be like this, we would be much better off in the city of Greenwood. So we appreciate everything that you do, and I want to read this to you, if that's okay. Okay? This is a proclamation, on behalf of the people of Greenwood, this is everybody in Greenwood, this is not just me or these guys up here, this is from everybody in Greenwood, okay? That's around 10,000 people. That's pretty cool, right? All right, so on behalf of the people of the city of Greenwood, Xander James Molina, whereas the city of Greenwood takes any opportunity to commend its citizens for their outstanding contributions to the betterment of our community, and whereas Xander James Molina has spent numerous hours cleaning up yard debris, trash, and other miscellaneous items to improve the look of his neighborhood, and whereas during the holiday season, Xander decorated his and neighbors' homes to help spread Christmas cheer for those unable to do so. And whereas the city of Greenwood applauds the efforts of this young man, this young citizen, and his strong work ethic and desire to improve our town, and now therefore I, Doug Kinslow, Mayor of Greenwood, Arkansas, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim January the 6th, 2020, as Xander James Molina Day. So this is officially your day in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas. And as a lot of people know, when I give these out, I typically give the authority to drive around town as fast as you want to, and since you are not old enough, plus the chief of police is sitting there, we're not gonna do that tonight. So it is your day, and I would say that he gets to go get ice cream, I'm not saying, I've got the tab taken care of, but I think he needs ice cream now. Let me, let me give you this, that's for you, we'll have our picture made, hold in that, and then I've got a couple of other things for you. This is a pen that is the same as the one I wear, and the motto is, the Greenwood is, feels like home. So the reason Greenwood, we believe, that feels like home to a lot of people, are, is because of you, is because of the things that you do, okay? I mean, to go into your neighborhood and to help people that can't especially, put a Christmas lights and that sort of thing, that is very commendable. I don't think, I guarantee you've done a wonderful job, and I want to give you a round of applause, too, also. I'm gonna ask a specific question, are your brothers and sisters of the same mindset you are, are they as good as kids as you are?
No.
No. He's honest as the day is long. Are they even close?
Uh, no.
I'm not gonna put you on the squad anymore. Well, there's a pen for whatever you choose to put it on, okay? And this is, to me, is as important as anything more than that. This is, this is what we like to call, is the key to the city. I don't give these out just to anybody, okay? I give a few out, but I don't give them out to just anybody. Now, your main question may be, what do I get to open with that? Well, nothing. Nothing, nothing. But I see what it does represent. It represents the hearts of every citizen in Greenwood, Arkansas, because of what you do and what you stand for, and how you work, and your work ethic, and what you do and what you feel in your heart. So this is from all the citizens of Greenwood, we love you and we appreciate what you do. Okay? All right, thank you, sir. He's sure, he's sure, I actually didn't want to say anything, so he's not gonna be a politician, though. Thank you very much, we're so proud, and thank you, family, for bringing that. Yeah, oh, let's get a picture. Smooth this thing, so we get... You wanna open this up? And you're how old?
Eleven.
Good deal, so I'll be out of office by the time you run. Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. What grade are you in?
Uh, I'm in fifth.
Fifth grade. And you're 11?
Yes.
Going on 37, sounds like, congratulations, and thank you for what you do to make our city better, keep that, all right, thank you for that. Question? Thank you. Next, we have a young lady, who needs no introduction, but I'm gonna do it anyway, I can find out, oh, I had another one, that was Kennedy Holland, is here somewhere.
Right here.
Oh, there you are. If you wanna come up, and I guess your entourage back there, you just can't shake, I'm gonna let you explain what you're here for and what's going on.
All right, perfect. So my name is Kennedy Holland, and I'm Miss University of Arkansas Outstanding Teen, and what that means is, I am a title holder in the Arkansas Outstanding Teen Organization, and I represent the organization, and I represent the University of Arkansas, and not only that, but as a citizen of Greenwood, I represent this community and everyone in it, and everyone includes even the people that are disabled, and that is part of my social impact, is that I have compassion for everyone that I meet, and especially the people who are disabled, and who need to be included in everything. And so, as a child, you know, you grow up, and you have friends, and you go to the park, and you swing on the swings, but when you're in a wheelchair, you can't necessarily swing with everyone else. And in Greenwood, we don't have a wheelchair-accessible swing, and so that's what I have decided to do. I had a fundraiser a few months back at CB's, and I, myself and a few other people sang in the parking lot, in the rain, and we actually got our money than we expected, and we had some people donate on Facebook, and a few family members and friends donated as well, and the Modern Women of American Company, they did a matching fund, and so we raised almost $4,000 for this wheelchair-accessible swing set, and so I would like to present this check in the amount of $3,788 to the Greenwood Park Civic. And I would just like to say, thank you, Americans, for helping me organize everything and allowing me to put a whole swing set in the park. Thank you so much.
That's fantastic. Thank you, I get a hug, I don't want to shake. That's awesome. And I, where did we catch this exactly, because I think you dropped through, it's taken. Here's what we're gonna do with this, this will be perfect. Nobody looks, I'm talking to a finance director, so we'll just put that... Sorry, you're... Thank you, Kennedy, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. If I may, Kennedy, awesome, second last land, but the later race back again last year. Awesome. Hey, we've already done our pledge, but if you'd like to do it again, we're ready, anytime. That's fantastic, thank you. That's what Greenwood's all about, though. Look what we got, look, looks like, too. And I think, uh, Xander, you're gonna be looking at a firm in soon for a landscape business, is that correct, I hear? Okay. And maybe putting up Christmas lights. Thank you both, thank you very much for doing that, being here. Okay. Next on our agenda is our committee report, South Sebastian County Girls Club. Kenny came by earlier, thank you, family, for coming, believe, bless you. Kenny came by earlier, I think you have a written report, you know, believe. Do you have any questions? Let us know, as always, my officer, Danny, I would relay those to Kenny, I know they're busy out there. SRCA, Lisa, these are both people, we can move that, we'll get back, it's supposed to be... And you're, we've got, you know, the contract on the agenda tonight, so if you want to just touch base with us on the report first, and then we'll go from there, if it can.
We're just making full advantage of it, she's gonna wanna do this, no, I do this on, you know, I don't like to bother in front of people.
She's made that very clear, I think, yeah.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here, I'm Deanna Ross, I'm the Executive Director of Sebastian Retired Citizens Association, and the Baywood Senior Activities Center, it's one of eight senior centers that I oversee in Sebastian County, and you all, very generously, give over $10,000 per year, and so every month, Lisa provides a report on what we do with that money, and it does go in Greenwood City Limits, and it does go towards food, the cost of meals that are delivered to your homebound residents inside city limits, and then also for the congregate meals for those inside city that do come, and these rates they're given to you are actually, they're called, what's, SSBG rates, some of y'all may be familiar with, SSBG grants, they're social services, law grants, there are people that fall underneath a certain income guideline, it's a 200% poverty level, so SSBG kind of reimburses us, because they consider these people the ones that cannot contribute at all for meals, because we're a donation program only, we cannot ask people for money, it's donation only, and we get 60% of our funding comes from federal grant dollars, I currently have a 1.5 million on our budget, I get $775,000 from federal grants, and the rest of that I have to come up with through forms of government, cities, counties, the donations that come into the senior centers, other grants that I seek, and anyway, everywhere, bank, rural, you know, raw theater, PayPal, things like that, but she is showing you on here that they've done 538 congregate meals, and congregate meals are for the individuals that come into the senior center, a home delivery meals, she done 1,405, and she's giving you the dollar amount, which was $3,512, and socialization is something that is really, it's just as important as the meals that we provide, because so many of your seniors are just at home, the quality of life is not the best, they lose a loved one, and then they stay in, and they dwell about that. I have had enforcement alone, people that will come in, and they are literally almost ready to commit suicide, and that's how depressed they are, and then, you know, they start coming to the senior center, and they get active, and they have a purpose, and sometimes I find a dog, sometimes they end up working for us, sometimes I end up finding a new spouse, different things like that, we have people get married at the senior centers, but these programs are extraordinary, when important to our communities, you know, and our, our seniors are very important, they're not senile, you know, they're not, they know what they're talking about, they have a lot of good knowledge, I love, I'm sorry, I can talk about all of that, I've been a senior for 12 years, but I've worked with elderly for 20 years, started out as a school teacher, it's not that way for me, so, went to the elderly side, but I love our seniors, and I love what I do, and I love being able to, you know, provide these programs for our community, we can do it without, we really can do it. If I have any questions, I'm always open to answer any questions, things like that, call me, Lisa, I live in Greenwood, more than welcome to, if you're making calls, anytime.
Is the federal contribution, is the SSBG grant, is that part of the federal contribution, or is that something separate?
No, SSBG, it is part of, it is part of the, excuse me, let me take that back, that is an extra amount, is what that is, and you have to get those people, so I was awarded $67,000 last year for SSBG, so we have to have people that meet that income guideline, meaning their income has to be 200% or less below the poverty level, which is about for one person, $1,400, so with myself or my records, if you're somebody, they will ask them a question, they'll say, is your income the best amount, or is it lower, and if they say yes, then we pick them on that SSBG, and we bill that SSBG out, that money until it's gone, and I'm about to run out of February, that $67,000 will have been spent, and then what I do is, I take those people and I move them up in another category, and I get USDA money, which is like 72 cents, is what I get, in addition to some of your grant dollars.
And this is for all your centers, correct, that amount?
That is for all, that, yes, it, yes, that is for all the centers, yeah, that...
And how many?
Eight.
Eight, I was thinking...
I had nine, but we, and to find one, unfortunately, about two years ago, because the location is an issue that we were having over there, that was still, we, we push out $32,000 a month, is what we push out, in Sebastian County, and we do feed anybody over 60 years of age or over in Sebastian County, and when we do home delivery meals, and I can't stress this enough, this is where our biggest cost is, and it's offset of where we receive the least amount of donations, because these are people that cannot live on a high assistance, they're really the ones that have the most food insecurities, they are the ones that are at your most poverty-stricken levels and stuff like that, so again, you've got the costs of vans, gas, insurance, tires, the packaging cost, the pickup fee, and that goes out to people, so we really do squeeze a lot of blood from a lot of parents, I mean, we, we run a tight budget, our employees are minimum wage paid employees, we don't offer any insurance, they work 30 hours a week, and it's not that we don't want to, but we literally can't, because this is a service, this is a service to the community, I have a lot of longevity employees off there. And we don't wanna get too out of it.
No, I don't want you to. Would the council want to discuss this further, if, again, I've got you on the agenda, I apologize for, it's kind of a long way away from there, I don't know if the council wants to, to discuss who that, and maybe discuss that now, or if you want, how do you wanna handle that, or the lease on there?
And I will say, Tom had asked me for a financial statement, and I thought that I sent it, I put it to the Greenwood, you know, webpage, where it said "financing," I clicked on that, and sent it through that, but I just found out that it wasn't on, yeah, I can hand deliver it tomorrow, I just didn't realize. Did you get that? Okay, that came off my personal, the one that I sent you came off of my email, if you're up to it, that's my personal email.
Yeah, it came, right? I tuned in that way.
That's the same one that I sent you.
Does that sound okay to move, to move that discussion until now, so they don't have to wait, I just wonder if it'll counter everybody back a little bit, but I think just to be courteous to you, ladies, if you can do that, if the council's good with that, okay? One question I had, if you don't mind, as far as the lease goes, and I know you're gonna get those finances, Tom, not the lease, but the finances a little bit, that has been asking me several times, and I didn't know the answer for sure, is what, if any, does the county participate?
What does the county get?
Yes.
The county, they provide, first of all, the county, of course, the building at Hartford is a county owned building, they take care of all that, the county covers all of that insurance on the vehicles, and then the county also contributes about $120,000 to SRCA. Now, out of that $120,000, and this was before my time, years, mm, about, well, yeah, about 12 years there, so probably about 15, 17 years ago, there was some issues with the senior centers, things like that, and the county did designate that specifically, out of the moneys that they give us, that $30,000 goes directly to the lower Sebastian County, so that $30,000 is distributed based on meals to each lower Sebastian County senior center. Now, the other $80,000 that I get from them is also distributed amongst even those centers, but in addition to the rest of SRCA senior centers, but $30,000, no matter what, goes to lower Sebastian senior centers, which is Hartford, Mansfield, Greenwood, and Levada. And then on top of that $30,000, they also get, based on how many meals they do, and that's the easiest way for us to disperse monies, is based on the meals that they do, so if Greenwood's not in Greenwood, that's 14%, they get 14% awards of the federal grant dollars, plus 14% of that $80,000 from Sebastian County, in addition to their $30,000 that they get, that is provided amongst... And they get all of Greenwood money, and again, that, you know, monies stay in cities, whatever monies, you know, fortunately, money stays in Fort Smith, Mansfield monies, stays in Mansfield, each town that contributes, that stays in that town, it does not go to any other senior center.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on, on the lease? We talked about the lease a little bit before, and this is the lease on, the SRCA lease, this is not including the building lease, that's a contract on the building, the farmer's bank.
That is the lease for Farmer's...
Right, right, it was already reported back long now, so, and I know Lisa knows, we talked a little bit about, we, Tom and I went to the bank and spoke, to the farmer's bank, and we haven't reported back to council yet on this, and had a good conversation, but nothing legitimate or nothing official came out yet, as far as the building goes, what the council has discussed, the lease part of it, so, so, the senior center, I don't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts on that specifically, or...
Well, we talked last month about doing certain things, I think that Mr. Handy advised us to table it, so you guys can talk to the bank.
Right.
I mean, kind of go in, if our...
I don't know what I'm liberty to say yet, really, about the bank, what the bank's thoughts are on the, on the building, that's what you're referring to, at that end of it?
Right. We, we actually, we're in agreement to raise the money we give to the senior citizen centers, but that was...
Right, right.
I think the lease was another subject, it's from our side of it.
Yeah, more, more...
When the ball's out of the farmer's bank, we're, we need to know what they wanna do, and we can say, well...
What do you, I mean, what do you think about?
You've got two things to think about. One is whether you want a short-term lease with them, they're willing to do that, they're willing to do one, three, five, not necessarily a 15-year, well, you decide what your long-term goal is, do you want them to, you want to look for another property that's energy efficient, that's more...
And then, you know, they start coming to the senior center and they get active and they have a purpose. And sometimes I find my dog, sometimes they end up working for us, sometimes I end up finding them a new spouse, different things like that. We have people getting married at the senior centers. But these programs are extraordinary, going important to our communities. You know, and our, our seniors are very important. They're not senile, you know, they're not, they know what they're talking about, they have a lot of good knowledge. I love, I'm sorry, I can talk about all of them. I've been taking a rep for 12 years, but I've worked with elderly for 20 years. Started out as a school teacher, it's not that way for me, so, went to the elderly side. But I love our seniors, I love what I do, and I love being able to, you know, provide these programs for our community. So we can't do it without them, we really can't do it. If I have any questions, I'm always open to answer any question, things like that. You call me, Lisa, I live in Greenwood, more than welcome to get your banking calls anytime.
Is the federal contribution, is the SSBG grant, is that part of the federal contribution or is that something separate?
No, SSBG, it is part of, it is part of the, excuse me, let me take that back. That is an extra amount is what that is. We have to get those people, so I was awarded $67,000 last year for SSBG. So we have to have people that meet that income guideline, meaning their income has to be 200% or less below the poverty level, which is about for one person, $1,400. So when I sell or I record a few somebody, they will ask them a question, they'll say, is your income the best amount or is it lower? And if they say yes, then we pick them on that SSBG and we bill that SSBG out, that money until it's gone. And I'm about to run out of February, that $67,000 will have been spent. And then what I do is I take those people and I move them up in another category and I get USDA money, which is like 72 cents. That's what I get, in addition to some of your grant dollars.
And this is for all your centers, correct, that amount?
That is for all, that, yes, it, yes, that is for all the centers, yeah, that.
And how many?
Eight.
Eight, I was thinking.
I had nine, but we identified one unfortunately about two years ago because of the location and some issues that we were having over there. But we still, we, we push out $32,000 monthly, that's what we push out, in Sebastian County. And we do feed anybody over the 60 years of age or older in Sebastian County. And when we do home delivery meals, and I can't stress this enough, this is where our biggest cost is and it's offset of where we receive the least amount of donations. Because these are people that cannot live on a home without assistance. They're really the ones that have the most food insecurities. They are the ones that are at your most poverty-stricken levels and stuff like that. So again, you've got the costs of vans, gas, insurance, tires, the packaging cost, the pickup fee that goes out to people. So we really do squeeze a lot of blood from a lot of parents. I mean, we, we run a tight budget, our employees are minimum wage paid employees, we don't offer any insurance, they work 30 hours a week. And it's not that we don't want to, but we literally can't because this is a service, this is a service to the community. I have a lot of longevity employees off there. And we don't want to get too out of it.
No, I don't want you to. Would the council want to discuss this further as well? Again, I've got you on agenda, I apologize for, it's kind of a long way away from there. I don't know if the council wants to, to discuss who that and maybe discuss that now, or if you want, how do you want to handle that?
And I will say, Tom had asked me for a financial statement and I thought that I sent it, I sent it to Greenwood, you know, webpage, where it said "find me" and I clicked on that and sent it through that, but I just found out that we're not. Yeah, I can hand deliver it tomorrow. Did you get that? Okay, that came off my personal, the one that I sent you came off of my email. That's my personal email.
Yeah, it came, right?
That's the same one I sent you.
Does that sound okay to move, to move that discussion until now, so they don't have to wait? I just want to, to counsel everybody back a little bit, but I think just to be courteous to you guys. We can do that if the council's good with that, okay? One question I had, if you don't mind, as far as the lease goes, and I know you're going to give those finances to Tom, not the lease, but the finances a little bit, that has been asking me several times, and I didn't know the answer for sure, is what, if any, does the county participate?
What does the county get? The county, they provide, first of all, the county, of course, the building at Hartford is a county owned building, they take care of all that, the county covers all of that insurance on the vehicles. And then the county also contributes about $120,000 to SRCA. Now, out of that $120,000, and this was before my time, years, about, well, yeah, about 12 years there. So probably about 15, 17 years ago, there was some issues with the senior centers, things like that. And the county did designate that specifically out of the moneys that they give us, that $30,000 goes directly to Lower Sebastian County. So that $30,000 is distributed based on meals to each Lower Sebastian County senior center. Now, the other $80,000 that I get from them is also distributed amongst even those centers, but in addition to the rest of SRCA senior centers. But $30,000, no matter what, goes to Lower Sebastian senior centers, which is Hartford, Mansfield, Greenwood, and Levada. And then on top of that $30,000, they also get, based on how many meals they do. And that's the easiest way for us to disperse monies, is based on the meals that they do. So if Greenwood's not in Greenwood, that's 14%, they get 14% awards of the federal grant dollars, plus 14% of that $80,000 dollars from Sebastian County, in addition to their $30,000 dollars that they get, that is provided amongst. And they get all of Greenwood money. And again, that, you know, monies stay in cities, whatever monies, you know, fortunately, money stays in Fort Smith, Mansfield monies, stays in Mansfield, each town that contributes that space in that town, it does not go to any other senior center.
Anybody else on, on the lease? We, we talked about the lease a little bit before, and this is the lease on, the SRCA lease, this is not including the building lease. That's a contract on the building, Farmer's Bank.
That is the lease for Farmer's.
Right, right, it's already reported back on here, so. And I know Lisa knows, we talked a little bit about, we, Tom and I went to the bank and spoke to Farmer's Bank and we haven't reported back to council yet on this. It had a good conversation, but nothing legitimate or nothing official came out yet as far as the building goes, what the council has discussed, the lease part of it a little bit, so the fall order contributed to the center. I don't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts on, on that specifically, or?
Well, we talked last month about doing certain things, I think that Mr. Handy advised us to table it until you guys talk to the bank.
Right.
I mean, kind of go in.
I don't know what I'm allowed to say yet, really, about the bank, what the bank's thoughts are on the, on the building, if that's what you're referring to.
Right. At the end of it. We, we actually, we're in agreement to raise the money we give to the senior citizen centers.
Right, right.
I think the lease was another subject from our side.
Yeah, more, more.
When the ball's out of Farmer's Bank, we're, we need to know what they want to do, we can say, well.
What do you, I mean, what do you think?
You've got two things to think about. One is whether you want a short-term lease with them, they're willing to do that. They're willing to do one, three, five, not necessarily a 15-year. Well, you decide what your long-term goal is. Do you want them to, you want to look for another property that's energy efficient, that's more maintained or could be easily maintained at a lower cost? You can look for things to do, fix that building up and provide the space that would provide some more energy efficiency to it. You could put up, have somebody go in there and tell you as a contractor, what, a punch list of what needs to do to bring it up to standards, how much is that going to cost the city? A lot of things that you can do, they are willing to work with you on a short-term lease. If you say, we think that we'll be looking and we'll have a better idea of what we want to do over three years. So we can go to them and say, we'd like a three-year lease. There are some things that they are willing to take out of the lease. One is the, a little statement, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but there's a statement in the lease that says that we're responsible to subsidize all of the operations in SRCA. That is going to be removed, that's not their, that's not part of what their lease should say, that's between us and the senior center. So we'll be putting something that you want, as far as what the payments are, in the SRCA contract. As far as the, the insurance is concerned, we talked to them about a million dollar property liability insurance. We are paying the, the insurance on the senior center, they're willing to drop that to half a million. Let's say, it doesn't have to be a million dollars, that's, they figure that probably could be low, if that would help us. We don't know the dollar impact of that right now, we've got a lot of insurance barriers on that. I don't know if that's going to save us a ton, but right now, your insurance on that would pay right at about $5,500 a year. For the senior center, for that insurance, property liability. So you have options and we can enter into a short-term lease and keep that going. I will let you know that on the budget, you know, you are looking at their operating costs for utilities and for repairs and maintenance. Now, anything you put into the repairs and maintenance side of it, it's sunk cost, as long as you're not doing anything to address bringing everything up to standards. You know, the windows are needing to be sealed, there's gutters falling down, a bunch of things around the building that definitely needs attention. The more you do to make that more energy efficient, the less the utility costs are going to be to you. So it's a dollar, if you spend a dollar, you get returned over time, so they look at it. We're looking at, annualizing their current amounts that we paid for 2019. We're looking at a budget right now of 14,500 utilities over the year estimated, and 10,000 would be the maintenance. Right now, if we annualized our maintenance cost, it's 18,000. They have other needs that I wanted to see their financials to see, what is it that they need that we probably should be looking at budgeting to see what's the true number that we would need to subsidize that. When you look at the $15,000 contract word was given to us at the last meeting, about 9,000, how are you going to carry it agency? That we're going to just divert that over because they have a bank to mount, if you will. So if we gave them the 15 plus the nine in the contract for, for the one year for them to go this next upcoming year, plus the insurance, plus the utilities and maintenance, you're looking at anywhere between 52 and 60,000 dollars is what your subsidy would be, could be less depending on what the maintenance teams are and what the utility costs are. It will be locked into, let's see, is that 24,000, let's, you know, say around 24,000 in the contract? That's just for them to operate the, you know, activities and helping with their meal costs and so forth. I don't know if there's any other costs that we're going to be obligated to and that you're even entertaining, but right now, like I was looking at number 252.
So, we get all that, and that's great. I think what we're, what I'm more interested in is if we give them a $60,000 check, broke up into 12 months, but we don't renew the lease, are they just going to bulldoze the building? I mean, you know, I mean, so I'm, I'm more interested in what Farmer's Bank's got to say. I'm not, I have no trouble working to give to them.
They're not going to sell the building. So they're not going to be able to acquire the land, not going to be able to do any of that, as we don't. They, they want that as a adjacent property.
But they, we don't own the building.
Really, but one of the options that we went to them with was, and we didn't even have to say it, we pretty much said it's not the same.
Or, or they have no intentions of keeping it up as a senior center if we don't renew the lease.
We didn't build that.
Well, that was the only question that was asked.
Well, I mean, that's the million dollar question.
It is the million dollar question.
Farmer's Bank leased the building to the, to SRCA. We leased the building, we're able to.
We did talk to them about that.
That's all we're asking.
It's exactly what I told you, they would do a fair market value lease, they would charge them, and it would be enormous, as far as.
They would not, they would not?
They would be able to sell it.
I think it's easy to say, I think it's fair to say that they would not give SRCA the same deal that they give the city for 15.
That is pretty much.
Now, that meeting was not fully attended, so it's hard, it's hard for me to say, and even Tom to say exactly what the intentions are. We went there with the intention of just trying to get scratch of service a little bit, and we sat down with two folks there. Third one joined us for a little while, but it was mainly two. And we went there to say, we as the city have a hard time, and I think we did okay by saying to represent you, the council, no reflection on SRCA, obviously, or for Senior Citizen Center, it's hard for the city, for you guys to approve every year, improving and improving and improving a building that we do not own, and that we have no, you know, that, that's the reason we went. And they heard us, the, the very factual, one factual that was ultimately was that it's not for sale, and they would not sell a property or building, so.
That was never even an option to hang through that much?
Well, we wanted to hear, I mean, I didn't want to hear it, but I thought if, if worst-case scenario, if they sell it at this for minimum some ridiculous price, we're better off putting something in, something you own at least, than we can get our money, you know, own it. So it's, it's a precarious, I don't know if that's a correct word or not, but it's an interesting situation, this leasing.
I wasn't around that leasing.
Yeah, I know, and neither, neither was myself, and it's an interesting situation that we are in due to that contract, so.
I mean, all of the centers that we do have are city-owned buildings. And one at Hartford is owned by the county, and Mansfield's owned, you know, City of Mansfield. I don't know, you know, there's piece of land here, maybe we can get, maybe kind of easy to rent. You have to build who you would, you know.
That, that would be a lot of what I would like to investigate, and I know this is all coming, you know, that's the reason, I think it's, it's tempting and, or looks good to be thinking about it, if the council agrees that we look at the short-term lease with Farmer's Bank. I don't think they have any intentions of tearing that building down anytime soon, as long as, as long as the senior citizen's there. I don't think that's their intentions. I think long-term, I know this, long-term, whether the building, you know, if it continues to be a senior citizen center, they may be okay, but if ever, if ever, they as a thing decide they need property for whatever reason, it's something they probably do not have a whole lot of heart, and that, that's not a quote from me, that's just a thought that I got from that meeting. So I, I think it would be good to, to visit with them, obviously, we have to go back to them and get a full board meeting and, and see what their thoughts are and entertain us a shorter, a much shorter piece, whether it's about a year or whatever, to get a plan. And I'm assuming, and I, I spoke to the apartment heads today, this is the year of the grant for me, this is now looking at this year for he grant for all, all apartments, but I think when we talk about the city being a little more ownership into it, I think the grant thing becomes a little more, it's not acceptable, a little possibility, and Senator Pitch may be able to, he's shaking his head yes, so we have Senator in the room that might get us out of something like that, not to put you on the spot or anything, but.
I can see that there, I know what I'm doing.
So anyway, that doesn't answer any questions, but we've got to meet more with these folks and figure out what they want or what they don't want. Tom, could you, can you run through that right down again, because I mean, I was adding up, you know, I thought we spent probably 15,000 in, you know, utilities and repairs, and then our contribution to them was 15,000. The in-home assistance, 9,000, and then you're saying the property insurance is 4,500? And you said, and then is there, and then you said?
This is 10,000, it's what we currently have, but if you annualize what's currently there, it would come out to be about 18,000, $18,000 of a year. So it'll, it ranges anywhere from 10 to 18,000, so you possibly could have that money. We don't know the condition of some of the items in there that would need to be addressed. You know, once gone in there and done a commercial, I don't think we know.
And that's based on the previous.
We're, I think Dennis has a better idea of some of the things that we've addressed, and what those costs are in the beginning. The short-term solution, because of the times of the essence right now, is that you look at whether you want to examine finding another building, building another building, if you're sorry about helping assist and providing this service, you know, through SRCA. Like you said, it's, it's up to you to decide how you want to proceed with this. But as far as right now, with that current existing lease that we have, that we have with them, I think your best bet or your best opportunity would be to do a short-term right now. It's kind of a stopgap, while we get a reassess.
Well, I guess for, for years, our contribution really has been somewhere in the neighborhood of around 30, 30, 35,000. And really, overall, when you count in the, the insurance, the, the utilities and repairs, and then, you know, the 15,000 contribution. You know, that's all been there, you know, we've just been really kind of focused on just the, the 15,000 for the meals, where our contribution.
Now, the utilities have been being paid for for the last year, you have always paid for your utilities.
We're all the same, it's been this period prior years. This is the first year that I decided when I saw the contract and said, we need to isolate exactly how much we're paying them, so we know what our true liability is. And now we know, and we went and looked at the verbiage or wording in the actual lease, and we said, there's some things that were put on us in that 15-year lease through, through the lease verbiage that really have no business in there. They're leased in the building, they can restrict, they can say it's a restricted-use building, they can say we can only use it and lease that within Florida purposes of a senior center. But to dictate that we have to have a subsidy to them for all operating costs, that's, that's not their purview to say. I mean, it's their building, but our contracts with them, and there would be no incentive for them to go out and get other sources of funding or anything, if they know that all they have to do is turn around and say, hey, we're short. And right now, you told me you were operating in a deficit.
And your numbers are probably concerning, Tom, are they, I mean, there, there are no, and I'm not trying to make it look worse than it is, but, but we, we've spent more money than that because of, of maintenance. I mean, I'm looking, I can look at Dennis right out there right now and know that.
Labor costs.
When we, yeah, labor, when we send guys over there to do, and as, as our contract said, we would do to, to keep it going, basically keep your doors open, it's, it's really a higher number than that. But until, until we've taken this real close look at it, it's, it's, like you said, the first plan says 15,000, plus, what was it, 2,500 for, for maintenance? Yeah, so that looked like about a $17,000 a year contribution, if you will. I'd like to just, yeah, I think, yeah, look at alternatives, I'd really like to just say with the short-term, you know, we have a stopgap measure right now, and, and then kind of look at, you know, the other alternatives we might have, you know.
Fairly sure we're just. I mean, you know, I mean, almost a month, a month at this point, until we determine what we're going to do. But, you know, you know, what they're willing to do, but. I mean, I've, I've always, I've said for day one, I've, I've never liked a lease agreement, I think it's a bad agreement from the beginning. And I don't, I just don't like any scenario of us leasing a building on somebody's behalf. I think it's a bad business group all the way around. It'd be great if Farmer's Bank said, we'll lease the building, but that Farmer's Bank's going to be the one to have to step up. I don't think that's something that we should be doing. I mean, it'll take, we're not going to resolve it tonight, certainly. We're probably not going to resolve it in time for the budget. So we need, you know, a month or two months or whatever, technically, the lease is up right now, isn't it?
The 31st.
31st of January, okay.
And that lease, if we go for a year, it's not going to cost us a dollar.
It's not the dollar that gets us.
Yeah.
The budget, you haven't seen, but the budget, we'll be talking about setting up review dates, these numbers are already in the budget. They're in the budget because I had to put a placeholder there and I had to figure out what's the worst-case scenario. You can always adjust it one way or another, but I didn't want to have nothing in there and then all of a sudden, I'm off guard.
Okay, any other thoughts? Can you please get the ring and throw up the building real quick?
Anytime I have a venture, I mean, I would be happy to sit in there and sit down, I know I actually, I work every day here, there's a lot. There's really a lot to our program and how it works.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and we're scheduling, at the end of tonight, we'll be scheduling budget stay sessions next week for all apartments, and certainly we'll have you come in and pick your label, because it's a better scenario if you're able to talk, and it's still in the meeting, obviously. But I, I think it was important for me, that what the council feels this way, is that you leave her tonight knowing that you're not.
We'll just come to your house.
Just come to my house, I've got one at your bedroom, and you have to bring the guys, be over there a little bit. But, you know, the funding, I, I think it's safe to say, if, if you're willing to say this with me, council, the funding that we're providing is not going away as it stands. In fact, we're, it sounds like we're more than willing to subsidize, subsidize it by that $9,000 issue amounted. By the way, Area H does not, is not aware of that yet, which is on that board too, so, but, but in, in our opinion, it, it makes sense to keep it here and to use it, and they're, they're banking it, which is good, and bring whatever needs it, those residents that can tap into it, and if ever it needs to go back, we can, we can readjust that, but we felt, I think, I know this council felt like that, $9,000 could do better by being, I mean, you're used to.
Well, I get to use it, Professor.
Exactly. So the building wise, the building we will be addressing, and I, I wish we had a bigger, better, a better meeting, a bigger meeting with the board. We will do that very, very soon, we can iron that, that out too. But just out of curiosity, how large a facility is the senior center as far as square foot?
I was looking to see if I saw any.
I mean, what would be adequate?
That is, um, not, look, when I lived at Air Force, I'm book smart, and they gave me money, we had a big gas in my car, they understood.
You're probably, or, or that square foot, you think it's a lot bigger than that? I just don't know that it's.
Doesn't it have size?
Facility thinks it's about.
I've never heard you all talking about size, it's more about facility itself, it's about.
And there's a lot of space in there.
You know, there one time it was over there at the EMS, which is much smaller.
Yes, there are a lot of wasted space, and I know our penny city, you know, those back rooms out there, are there utilities, is there stuff on out there?
We don't have nothing on out there, we got the door shut off of that.
I'm just thinking about a compatible, I mean, something, something, something smaller than storefronts.
A dining room, a kitchen, and you have to have a cool room. Lisa can work out in the dining room, she doesn't need an office, now she can park. Listen, they're getting cheesy, but no, I mean, a cool room, a dining room, kitchen. There is a couple offices, you know, in the back, there's wasted space, there really is, and I have been involved in, you know, plans, building some of the senior centers and stuff, so at that, I do have a good idea of what's wasted, what's not wasted, how things need to be utilized.
I think you're doing a pretty good job of what you got, being, it was, it was a bank, and, and I think we've all been there, is it, it was a bank, and to see what you're doing with it, and I go over there and see what you're doing, and like you said, there's probably some offices behind, and Lisa, like there is.
Well, we have an exercise room in one, then we have a library in the other one.
Okay, okay.
And so we've got one office to stay in.
Right, and you don't, you do not move that pool room, I know that.
No, they don't want to touch the pool room. And then when we say pool, everybody thinks we got a swimming pool, but it's not swimming pool, it's a guy's play pool.
The guy had to take field room, but he didn't take that, so he had to. The guy had to take field room, but he didn't take that room.
I mean, we, I mean, we love the facility, we just need something that we're, you know, I know y'all's put money into it, y'all need to.
And we do understand.
We understand that, but the roof is leaking bad, we've got six big leaks right now.
And I got to let you.
We might have a couple of brick hearts up there.
We do understand, we do, I understand, we worship religion, I.
Well, they're in charge of the systems, so we want to make sure that we do the right thing with it.
And I don't guess it's up to y'all, maybe attempt to reach out to find the financials.
Hey, I've talked to them and talked to them, I talked to them, when we had a car broke down, and they wouldn't help us on that, but Chief Dawson gave us an SUV that was theirs and helped us after that, and, you know, we just, we've talked and talked to them, they said they will not put nobody into it. We had people that goes to our center, that goes to church with them, talked to them in church, and they said, no, they are not putting nobody into it. We don't know what else to do.
I think we should take the same approach.
I mean, there's a lot of elderly people that are very mad at Farmers Bank, because they won't step up and help us. You know, there's a lot of elderly people that's went over there and talked to them, and they say, no, they won't step up and help us, so what can we do? You know, we've talked to them, and I think the elderly is as important as anybody else, you know? I think you're, you're wife's mother, grandmother, you know, and the elderly are very towards us, you know, I've done it for seven years, and they're like my grandparents to me, so.
They're really doing a lot, just.
And they will tell you what they think real quick.
Oh, yeah. So we'll tell you what they think real quick.
It's part of the time.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Which is good, I, I mean, yeah, they have a lot of questions, and rightly so, so. Okay, anything else from Counsel? I'll answer this conversation, so we will, Tom will look forward to looking at finances just kind of better, have a better understanding of what, where we are, and where you are, and how we can, okay? And then we will schedule another meeting, and probably have you folks come with us, I think, I guess, if you'd like to do that, I think, and then.
We'll bring all the elderly people with us.
Yeah, very good. Maybe we could just have it over there.
Sure happens when we start talking about building alcohol down there.
That's true, that's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, I appreciate it, and I know y'all spent a lot of time talking about this, and I think you have a role with your person.
It's important to us, thank you, appreciate you. All right, thank you for allowing us to move from that, and, and move on to Parks Commission, I don't want you to go staying with here.
Counsel, standing. I've got a report, I'm looking at the December, the border, I just like to add one line up that last month's city council, you know, you approved it to go to whole city, come to our, you're purchasing land adjacent to Bill Park, with the guarantee not to exceed it, and use a, go down, they gave it nine thousand, and you save that city in, first of all, it's only twenty thousand.
Y'all are purchasing it, is that what I understood, y'all are purchasing it?
We've got our acceptance all over there. Any questions?
Thanks, sir, appreciate you. Water Works Department Commission, Ray.
We've not had a commission meeting since last time, it was before y'all, but I think the last time, one of the topics we talked about most was sewer rate increase, and I ran up some numbers, you should have this in your package, and this has not been either spoken to the rest of the commission or approved by yet, it was just the draft. And basically from our 2018 audit, we were a hundred and five thousand, seven twenty-six dollars short of the hundred and ten percent debt coverage requirement. That was 2018, expenses grew up over time, so if we raised that to a hundred and twenty percent of that debt since 2018, we'd need a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars more revenue. Revenue could come from water, or sewer, or a combination thereof. Our total water rev, now we have revenues for cat fees and weight fees and various fees, but it's just pure water revenue and just pure sewer revenue. Our sewer revenue's about five hundred fifty thousand, our water revenue is one point three million, give or take. So a hundred and forty-two thousand on sewer, this is what we looked at trying to do, we have thirty-three hundred sewer customers, our minimum monthly sewer charge is nine dollars, Fort Smith on toes over thirty. If you look at Milltown, we sell, Milltown and Jamesport don't have, don't have sewer, obviously, but Jamesport's minimum for water's twenty-five, Milltown's is twenty-something, so our nine dollars is relatively cheap, and we get subsidized sales tax money, which we're aware that's a good rea, part of the reason why. But also, we have a thousand sixty-nine customers that pay the minimum every month in sewer, that was average this last year, we, some months it's more, some months less, but actually a thousand sixty-nine a month, that is our fast-destruction segment. And I think Claire and I are going to talk about some duplexes up there on the corner, and, you know, be, or fairly small, we have Gablesville Corner, four hundred and forty parks out west of town, and some of them cram in three hundred and ten, three sixty places there, eighty, ninety acres. You're going to get a lot more people paying the minimum to do that. And if we continue to charge a very low minimum, we're going to have to sock the schools and the apple packaging and the various customers pretty hard. So this is a, when I get into down to details, this is a way of trying to kind of level that out some lot, and don't get the big guys too much, but, you know, some. Basically, now, if we raise the minimum by one dollar, all thirty-three hundred customers have to pay that, it does affect just a thousand sixty-nine, everyone goes up. So if we were, I'm talking this part now, if we were to raise our minimum by a dollar, then the people that pay more than the minimum, that small portion of bill more than the minimum, which is not small for some large customers, they have to grow up fifty-one percent. If we raise it two dollars a minimum, grow up thirty-one percent. Three dollars, the minimum goes up only twelve percent. And if we raise the minimum four dollars, we don't have to increase the larger amounts any at all. My draft is to go raise the minimum three dollars a month, and to raise these figures you see here, that, you know, for over a thousand, you pay three twenty-five, for these thousands before, basically those overages go up approximately twelve percent, I rounded it up or down to a nickel, but it's not exactly twelve, it's pretty close. And basically, here is why I'm going to propose a commission. And it's real easy when you have a need go away, not to lower revenue. So what we're going to propose doing is to only do the full increase on a temporary basis. Our debt, our largest debt, or not the one that's covered, is one of the largest dollar amount, we make two payments a year, we'll make two this year, two next year, in 2022 we're going to make one payment, these in April. And so in April 2022, you propose, what we'll propose in commission would be that we'll give back a third of the minimum increase, and approximately half of those from ones above that. And install a little discipline on it, and without the debt, you know, we shouldn't have any problem meaning that, we're gaining more customers, and that helps also, but this should, gives a very high probability of beating that debt covenant. Any questions or comments?
And if we get a wet summer in the hill?
What do we get a dry summer? A drought, a water business, a water business is kind of, when you have a dry summer, you sell lots of water, you don't have to sell sometimes, and if you have, you know, most of your ground, you sell all you want, because you don't have much to sell, but it's, so it's kind of a tough business, but also getting our minimums up, I was talking to Jamesport, and they're not affecting the same way we are, they had that high minimum, let's say if you use four thousand gallons, with them, you pay twenty-five dollars for the first gallon, you only pay twelve, twelve bucks the next three thousand, so they sell five hundred gallons less per person, it doesn't affect them much, they have a lot of large customers like us, we have to buy a higher thousand from them, how much we need, whatever, water, I think it's somewhat similar, smaller amount of volume. And plus they get forced to sell the money, which we get sales tax money to keep using operations, they can use for the selling money of operations. And so, uh, they're not affecting as much as we are, and our low minimum really throws these dry years, you know, wet years really throws a trail in our operating results, and this will fix that a little bit without, I think, getting those smaller customers too bad, and we tend not to sock them too much.
Tom, my, my, one thought I had about having, you know, everybody about the rollback in 2022, is you retire a debt, but you're also, we current debt and improve the system.
Right.
You know, somewhere down the road, we're going to probably be right back in that boat of, you know, growing the system and improving it. Do you keep the month, the rates the same?
Depends on how much you grow your, basically with a water infrastructure, you have a large amount of fixed costs, and you grow your customers, your variable costs don't aren't that much, so if you grow your system fast enough, you can go a long, long time without rate increases. I think Jamesport, of course, they started out with their brand new, with a very high rate, and they grew, I think their first thirty years only had one rate increase, and since we've been the customer last ten, we've enjoyed two of them. And, uh, so we, we, if we grow our system, if we keep, if we build enough houses, we might have another rate increase on sewer for quite some time. Water, we're working to tell them, Jamesport, when you hit the new lake, our water payment's going up, and I think substantially, I think, I think the mayor was there, he's definitely almost gleefully happy, he knows it's going to go up a lot, and he emphasized it a lot. So probably when Jamesport finishes their life, which is anywhere near doing, I talked to Donnie Sanford over New Year's, and, uh, how's it going with the new lake, Donnie? We're still waiting on permits, we've been waiting for about a year and a half, which is longer than it should be. But probably next water rate increase will be when Jamesport increases, if we only hit the lake finish.
When does that contract run out, Jamesport?
Uh, we entered it, I think, in March of 2010, for twenty years, so you got two more years. And this would be interesting, Sebastian Lake's contract ended with them last year, and everyone, pretty hot and heavy, rumor was, in the fall, I don't know what the issue is, but, but the other, they're having a problem on that one. Any, any questions, this looks satisfactory, I mean.
Well, I guess one thing I was wondering, you know, is that, uh, do we need a hundred and forty-two thousand, or are you thinking that we're going to have more water usage, you know, like in, in 2020?
There's really no way of knowing that, we do know that our expenses will be going up, the mayor is going to get some more expenses over time, we know our expense is going up, we don't know what our, there's two variables, we don't know how many more customers we're going to have, but, you know, if these, these duplexes get built out, you know, like all Shama in development, uh, it's going to give us more growth, you know, than we've had in a while, I mean, not huge, not like back in the nineties, but, so we're adding some more customers, and that's going to build, how much water per customer, really don't know.
I guess I was just wondering, you know, if we go to twelve, you know, it seems like that's, you know, uh, giving us an increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand overall, and I thought still seems like we're, we're about thirty thousand short of that hundred and forty-two you're saying that we need.
Uh, well, we do three per customer, that's ninety-nine hundred dollars a month, plus like a hundred and eighty-seven, it's like a hundred eight hundred or whatever, and basically the twelve percent increase and the rest will get us there.
Okay.
Yeah, gets there, gets the other remainder, remainder.
Well, I, I guess one thing I would get is that, you know, which, and if we go to twelve dollars, kind of, Daniel, I mean, we're still, you know, much less, you know, you know, over, you know, fifty percent less than Fort Smith.
Considerable less, yes.
So there, so I think, yeah.
That's a good thing.
And that is a good thing, but I think, you know, uh, not kind of, don't let out there that, oh, we're going to reduce it, you know, by a dollar, you know.
No, we don't have to, I mean, we don't have to, um, but it's real easy to get lazy and fat, you know, you know, don't have a certain amount of discipline on it, but, um, you know, we don't have to, uh, but doing it puts a little discipline on us, which is intent, because once we get that debt paid off, you know, I think, the one we go away in 2022 is probably sixty, sixty-five percent of old debt payments, those are smaller, and, um, you know, we're going to be pretty good after that.
Well, I just, you know, again, you know, what, kind of like what Greg does, I think was, I'm informed on is that the, uh, the regulations that come out, you know, and they know, there's things there, you know, you never know what the, you know, cost are going to be, uh, from year to year, and, uh, and what they're going to require of us as a.
That is, that is true, you don't know what the feds or state will put on you, um, basically the, we're giving thirty-five thousand, so we pay back the people, I mean, and we're getting rid of the debt payment, I don't have with me, but several hundred thousand a year, you know, two, three times what the annual rate increase is going to be, that is going to give us a big margin, getting rid of that debt, big, big boost. And in the future, we will probably try to not borrow money, we'll try to use our, our savings, and if we do, next time, I'm going to read every first covenant a lot better than on the last, on that most recently. I asked the right question, the sales money's getting ready to fine print, that won't make that mistake again.
Well, I know it's just, you know, there's areas that, yeah, that we're looking at, trying to build out to, you know, and that is.
We've got sales tax money for that, we've got sales tax money for that, and we've got other recoup fees on theme we can, so we've, we've got, I don't know, Tommy, y'all a couple million dollars saved in capital improvements about, some are involved, and we're gaining a little over a million a year on sales tax, so we've, we've got, we don't need, uh, service money, water service money for capital improvements, we need this for operating expenses.
Covenant was put on by the water bond, not the sewer bond, but it covers both boxes, so the covenant will stay even though you pay off the sewer bond. You immediately defend two hundred thousand dollars more profitable with sewer, because the money that we take off the top to pay the, the sewer bond drops right to revenue on the fee line. So two years from now, this bond covenant, the bond, that sort of feature will be two hundred, uh, covered, two hundred percent at least, without a rate increase, so, he'll be seventy-five eighty in 2022.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to do this right back here. Anything else?
I have one, just reference the, the contractor, Jamesport, you know, Tom Cutford, and I don't know who was on that water committee back in the day, uh, when we, when we negotiated the agreement with James.
I was the only one who negotiated the agreement.
Uh, you know, a lot of the discussion back then, I mean, and you recall, you know, the yield, the, the yield of the lake is not enough, the water plant's not enough, we can't do it, we can't figure it out, we, we, the coal mine is a political, uh.
Pride.
A grame, you know, all this stuff, and so we went out and said, well, let's go make this deal with Jamesport, we're going to go make a twenty-year agreement with Jamesport, which gives us city, kind, we buy time for the city to figure out what we're going to do next. So we're halfway through it, so, you know, over the next ten years, it seems, you know, I'd like to see the water committee moving in some direction of what, what are we going to do when that, you know, because to your point, you can bet when that contract expires, the new terms are going to change. And so if we have no other option, you know, we're sitting ducks.
The, uh, Jamesport's lake, supposedly they can produce, it's a more of a plant strain, but also a lake, it's a little less, they can produce only about three point six million gallons a day right now, but that's the plant capacity in Jamesport, and their lake depends on how much it rains, but their new, part of their new sewer, they're going to upgrade that plant capacity to five million gallons a day, we were your consultant about a year and a half ago, and their lake will double in size, but that does not double their long-term supply, because their, their storage will cost them double, but their watershed is the same. And we could grow, we could grow another five thousand feet of green wood with Jamesport, we might give up another ten thousand, but it depends on how the rest of Jamesport's customers, you know, their professional customers grow, they grow very much, I doubt Jamesport will take care of us above twenty thousand, if, you know, maybe seven out of ten years, wet years, three out of five years, they won't be able to, and so, yeah, we're going to have to look at something.
And, and I'm not suggesting that, that we don't use Jamesport, I mean, there were days when I said, let's sell the whole thing, and Timbo's included, to Jamesport, you know, because the city kind of proved we weren't very good at operating, you know, back in.
We're a little better now.
You know, we're better now, certainly than we were.
Yeah, I remember back in the day where you built your bats, I look down and go, I'm not getting that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit, uh, sorry, I'm, I'm the bad guy, I guess.
Yeah, it wasn't very often they'd be.
I won't.
One day a year, two days a year, and the other, it was like, you know. One day, a year, two days, a year, the other, it was like, you have one of those.
Well, you know, before we added on to the dam and all that, we had, we had many, many years of, of rationed water and all that good stuff, you know, so I don't know, I don't know what the answer to that is, if, you know, part of the argument has been, you know, the city's not in the, in the natural gas business or the electricity business or anything else, we let the people know how to do it, do it. Maybe that's what Jamesport is, he's got.
I would not want to hitch my wagon to Jamesport. They, they have a pretty good water production capability, they have a pretty good lake and water. Our watershed's twice as big as theirs, I mean, almost twice, it's like fifty-six acres, I was like, fifty-six square miles, I was like a hundred and ten square miles. But they have just a much better lake than we do, they make good water, and we make much better water today as well. They have several problems, they are deeply indebted, they're financially stressed, their infrastructure, especially any green was getting cold, and problematic, now down south it's a little better, there's near a pipe. And they've got, I wouldn't, I'd be very hesitant to hitch my, you know, depending on them totally. Fort Smith is equally financially strained, but they've got one heck of a lake, I mean, one heck of a lake, but, you know. The only other direction to go, I thought people do, see what they got, I have no idea, probably not much. And then internal, that's about the four options.
Our biggest mistake was we didn't build the dam like they did.
Like Fort Smith, yeah. Yeah. I used to operate lake, not, people that work for me used to operate lake in there, Lake in there is North Atlanta, it's a flat, they've seen the water, they've bought it in Atlanta. We, for every, I mean, based on many people, we, Lake in there is a huge, huge lake, huge, and a very small watershed compared to the size of the lake, but based on the watershed size compared to ours, we, same ratio, we could just serve a thousand people, we'd have to have a dam about three times as high. We could do it, so we've got plenty of water, just don't have a way of storing it.
We probably wouldn't give that in relation to the department.
Yeah, yeah, that would, that would, yeah, we'd pull up the people that have, anything else? I just wanted to make one comment, I think you're gonna be talking about impact fees, and switch a little bit to sewer. It's been a tough year on sewer this year, with all the rain. And this year, if we had more than, we probably had been a five hundred thousand or sewer customers and they don't pay, if we had much more than that, we could have done some of the latest plant days, because we have infiltration. And we're gonna tighten up some infiltration, some maybe build some sewer, sewer tanks, sewer is very, 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 sort of, let out, that's on down the line. But there's an impact to adding more customers, and we're taking, we're well taken care of because of the sales tax one, we don't need the extra money, we've got, we have ample to do that development. But there is impact for adding new houses, and this, this is me personally, not the commission, I fully support an impact, too. I mean, we've got other things we need, we need some impact, we need more. Anything else?
Thank you, John, I think it's, some of us have been challenged with it, as, as Tom does, all of us every day, or other departments, we can try to get a three- and five-year plan out there to look at, it's kind of like you guys have a ten, fifteen, and twenty-year plan, we're thinking about what to do in the future. And we can, we can think we're not gonna grow, and I'm not saying anybody's thinking that, but we're at a, we're at a crossroad, I think, I think we can all agree that we're, we're getting ready to grow this majorly, and I'm not talking about next year, next two years, but things are gonna change with what's going on around us, so it's important, as these guys said, before, have to figure out what.
They never want to.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, sir.
Assistant forum, I don't want to sign up this evening to speak at that, at that time, so we'll move on to financial report, Mr. Marsh.
I'll be back.
Look, look what you done, clear the room.
Clandestine meeting going on, I love it.
I was on the impact fee statement that was made, I totally realized is that that doesn't fall to us, or to, I think he would say with Tim, he would not be there, why that was mentioned for a lot of, in context of all of it, I just wanted to do that, kind of the counter. Yeah. What's that, Jane? You know. Okay. City sales and use tax, one of the things I was hoping that we would do is probably come closer to the three percent. We ended the year, we brought the numbers through the December election, that was, November election's this evening, December, two point seven percent, it fell about point three percent, four point three percent for a W job, normally happen. One of the things that we, was published today, was that the state of Arkansas released the DFA, the sales and use tax revenue, this previous year period increased three point three percent, we increased two point seven percent. State over all elections, three point three, since the old new tax plus the state, we reflected only about a two point seven percent increase over our previous year. But the good news is that December's numbers, the numbers that they reported for December, is up four point three percent, and we are up four point seven percent. So we actually beat our December. And if you'll go back to the city sales and use tax first page, you'll see May, June, July, and, May, June, July, and March, those four months right there were really low, along with October. So we have some killer ones sitting there, that ones were really down, and I noticed that during the flood period, that's when the rates were really down, really low, March, uh, May, June, July, actually, point nine, point one, and twenty-four percent were up.
May, June, and July.
Which would be historic April and May.
It's historically, does that track, historically always down?
Yeah, we'll see on the graph, the sales and use tax graph, that we kind of, in some areas, we were conversed to what the normal trend would be, some we were actually, you'll look at two thousand sixteen, we were, two thousand nine, uh, two thousand sixteen was probably one of the better years, uh, years that we had for the month of April, February and March. And we were even below that, but by and large, we had a couple of, about three or four months where it kind of didn't, it didn't generate the three percent that we probably would be getting. I do notice, though, that you'll see from July on, that we are higher, just about every month, the only exception would be in October, and we're starting to see a little bit of bump due to the fact that we're getting some sales and use tax now from internet sales. So hopefully that's gonna trend more positive, still need some locals in town, I mean, the hotel sign is three point three over all those states, and two point seven, for shoppers, there's some shopping here, we need to do something to make some shopping.
Internet sales bump, is that reflected now, in December, December, when, when did we first start seeing that?
The internet sales? Boy, I'm not, I can't even say that that's exactly what we're seeing, they started collecting it in July, so.
Okay.
September is about when it should start falling through us.
So that's my question about the internet sales, I would ask that, if, if you buy something from Amazon, and you live in Greenwood, Arkansas, those funds make their way back through Arkansas, finally to Greenwood, and they go above them, it's not just, probably a longer cycle to get.
Sure.
I probably should have known the answer to that.
We're, we're, we just, you pay sales tax like I do, it's all segmented out on our form, that money that says Greenwood, it'll go to Greenwood, but it's gonna be a month later. How long does it take? When I send it in, when Daniel sends it in?
About two, at least a two month lag.
A two month lag, okay. If I send it in by the twentieth, I'd get a three percent break, is a two or three percent break. I send it in between then and the first, I have to pay the full amount, I send it after the first man that you don't want him on you.
It's true.
It's hard to get him off of you, so I always try to.
Now, because the internet sales, though, that they, it's only when they reach a hundred thousand or something, sales.
I just know that that's, seems to be that once that started happening, we started bumping above, we're not trailing exactly where two thousand eighteen was, we're starting to see a little bit more of a push. I'd love to start watching it a little more, we're bustling in there, two thousand twenty, see if that's gonna continue that kind of, and we'll do some more digging in there, but just so you know, the budgets are set at the two point seven percent growth rate, because we budgeted flat. So those numbers are locked, locked in right now, you're sitting in your county sales tax are locked in at last year's numbers. Cowen is one point four percent, that's what we ended, you'll see that under, first page. I budgeted initially, I was projecting one point five, but it ended up being one point four.
What was the problem?
I, I, not enough sleep, I don't know. Darn, my question. Sam, right?
What's your main concern?
Never remember the abolition, Sam, right? Oh, you made a mistake. That's on film. On the, I know, I know, on the balance sheet page one of your report, there is a line item that's unusual, it's unusual because we switched healthcare provider insurance companies, from Recost and Shield to United Healthcare. So you'll see a line item down there on the first column on the left side, down at the bottom, that says prepaid expenses, and you will see prepaid health insurance. You have to pay that ahead of time, so we had to pay January's in December, but we didn't have a bill, they just estimated it based on what we knew we had as far as current coverages, and they're gonna adjust it on the first bill, so we went ahead and paid it, but we didn't book it as an expense to the, to the health side, we booked it as a balance sheet, and we'll adjust it next month, this year, in January. That's why, if Tom there, if he had any questions, I know that was bothering some of you.
By the way, Tom questioned that, just so you know, this blank, blanket bill from the insurance company.
With absolutely no support. But it is, you do pay your expenses ahead, you pay it in the next. The balance sheet growth from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, a jump in our assets, liabilities, and equity. So we have grown our equity in the, on the balance sheet side, which is more realistic now. And the previous years for liability on it, because we cleaned it up. As far as the detail is revenues and expenses are concerned, I gave you again, if you look at your expenses, starting on page five, or three, four, three, three, page three, and keep going, and you will see, starting with the expenses, I gave you the capital outlay, again, the actual to the budget, so you'll see which departments spent their budgeted capital dollars and which ones did not, and you will see the totals at the end, how the year ended. So we had a budget of four point two million dollars, we actually spent one point four million, and we had a variance actual budget, and the best one we ever looked at would be a favorable budget, because we didn't spend the money, but then the other side of that would be you didn't spend the money, which is things that capital projects need to do, that are just gonna be moved into twenty twenty. So that's a two point seven million dollar underspend. Then you look at your total expenses, we budgeted nineteen billion for last year, and we spent twelve point nine million, you could say that's, that's great management of your budget. Six point four billion dollars that was not spent, take the two point seven million out for capital and capital improvements, and that means your operating budget was underspent of three point seven million dollars. You could either say that's great budgeting, or you could say that's not great budgeting. So you have to consider that in budgets when you do reviews.
Let me ask you this, you, I've heard you say that a number of times, you get this time of the year, I guess a couple of times, it's a little bit in a few years, when we talk about the capital projects that aren't done, and you talk about how that money just gets moved, does this, I mean, is that all that has to be moved, or, I mean, can we say, we gave you the money to rebuild something, you didn't do it, we didn't, we're gonna put, let's ask for something else now, or?
Well, all of it's gonna be put back in your budgets for next year, you will see every item that they are saying, we are not abandoning, we're gonna continue, and here's the carryover amount. Those that they did abandon will not see in the next year's budget, so, yes, it'll all be transparent to you, you'll see exactly which projects weren't completed, what stage base they have left to complete, and they will continue with that as a carryover. We'll see that mostly in.
Yes, we could do what you just said, maybe. If Will Dawson said, I'm gonna buy a car, and we put thirty thousand in there, he didn't buy a car, we'd say, Tesla can't get a car, but if it's some restricted fund, obviously we couldn't do that.
But we discussed phasing in some of this budget, so that that money that's not being used can be invested.
And that didn't start of this year, because last year was a lot, well, beginning of this year when we approved the budget, presented it to you, I said, we need a three- and five-year budget for capital, in other words, tell me what your current obligations would be, if you're gonna have a project that's running one or three years, then estimate what your first year expenses are gonna be, tell me what the whole project's gonna be, and then I'll carry that out, so I know how to whether long-term invest, medium-term invest, or short-term invest the money so that we can get a bigger return. I'm just pointing out to you why that's important, because we had two point some odd million that we didn't obviously use, that could have been working for us. Even more evident when you look at page eleven, on your budget variance for your fund, overall, we actually put into our, also, one point seven million dollar variance, from where we set our fund balances would end, we actually put one point seven more back into it, so we did not complete the fund balances to the ten million dollars that we thought we would, we actually put one point seven more in. So I would have loved to have been able to invest that.
On that point, or on that remark, statement, I think it's important, you and I talk about this quite a bit, that sometimes, and I'm not, this is because water service is not here, but we, the city, water sewer says, we're gonna spend X amount of dollars, millions of dollars, and sometimes it's as if it's gonna be done in a year, and we all know that that's not the case, and we can't necessarily get that done in a year. Like, one, you've got the engineering cost, and certainly it's this process, but to, to put that in there and then it not to be used is, is an issue, I think, that we need to start looking at a little bit, whether it's them or anybody else, because that's, that's harmful, and you've got the different ways, one, the public is so inclined to really drill in on our budget and say, okay, the water sewer department was supposed to be next ten million dollars last year, well, they didn't do it, well, it was physically possible to do that to begin with, so why do we, why do we even allow that to be put in there like this? Should be just engineering fees for the future, I mean, it's just, it's a different.
And then water, water.
Exactly, and I'm not, again, it's not just because they're not sitting here, but that is, that is a large amount of money that that particular commission or government's in charge of.
And I, and I, Daniel's point, the restrictive stuff, I, I'm unfortunately, I'm not really keen on all that, but I was thinking more of, like you said, we're putting this for this and this and that.
Yeah, whatever it is, and again, it could be anybody, I mean.
But he always, but Thomas makes a statement about how, it's, it's still there, but it's not there just for a capital job, well, I, I just wanna go back to the general, we'll start all over, and if you will, I mean, well, and like, that's how.
Theoretically, that's what's happening, because you will see it all in the budget can, we don't say, oh, it's, it's not everybody, but it's, we say it last year, it's actually re-entered. One, one thing about the, oh, I'm trying to think of that, I hate that, it has to do with the, like, oh, the water has like, water sewer has like four point, let's say four million dollars right now, they're sitting on, actually, their total's somewhere close to about four point five million dollars, and we're gonna be talking about a potential sewer in a pretty, set of commission meeting, while they're sitting on four point five million dollars, people are gonna go, whoa, wait a minute, that's, why are you doing that? Well, what they don't know is that three point five million of that is already committed to capital projects, so that money is separate from their operating money, and operating money, according to the state of Arkansas, water sewer has to operate that project, cannot operate at a loss. It cannot operate at a loss or subsidize it with any other taxpayer's revenues. Waters Surfer has to stand alone. So it's an education thing, and we want to be very transparent in exactly what's committed dollars.
Just save as much as possible as we can there before it's been a 10 years and we done with all this in the garbage. Let's not do so. The water, sewer, whatever, trash.
And then you have the detail revenue thing. Every, every department's individual revenue and expense statement is there. If you have any questions, you can send me your company about it, send me an email.
It might be helpful, you know, this, as we go forward, and talking about operating budgets versus capital, you know, if, maybe we, that's what we concentrate our view of. Does that make sense? I mean, that does tend to, I mean, it's your point. As you look through these budgets, you know, and look at the bottom lines and various things, you know, not, not, not catching that there's $4 million sitting over here for some committed project. You know what I mean? It's sort of, you lose the, how are we doing on the operating side, you know, versus, you know, are you operating within your, your means? Or are we new?
Well, I guess going back there to page eight, you know, you said, you know, we had that variance to the actual, variance actual to the budgets, you know, 2.7 million. But then you said, made the comment that the overall, I think, you know, variance was that almost 6.5 million or something like that.
The 2.7 is capital.
Okay, 2.7 is capital.
It's the capital portion of that 6 million. So the other 3.7 million is operating.
Is operating. And so is that going, is that going to just back in, are we going to see that next year too then or something? I mean, you're saying that that should be, that's a.
That's not. All of that is, that's just overestimating expenses, that's what I'm saying. You can't just say, let's target, let's target capital, because I'm showing you that the operating is out of that too. Now, without a white paper, well, I mean, they didn't spend that. That's good. Close the screens out here. It's like, can we get a little more accurate in our numbers? Instead of just giving a high estimate, saying, oh, we'll do within that. Because that ties my hands to NATO cash. And I need to know what you're truly going to spend, because I can't put that in a long-term, you know, federal reserve note or federal note treasury. If I don't know if I believe it's going to be used in the next 12 months. So I'm trying to get a little more realistic in the budget if the department has to do that very same thing. So it frees up my ability to invest this money.
Thomas, in a way though, is, can it, can, at some point, is this going to help us try to get to that magical $1 value of cash we'd like to have? You know, we talked about, yeah, right. I mean.
Trying to develop a contingency for every, every department.
Well, we've always talked about having that half a million, I think we have to move it up to a million or wherever we wanted. So I understand where you're talking about as far as budgeting goes, but it sure is nice to not be over budgeted.
Yeah, well, do you sit?
A lot of people are over budget around these parts, yeah.
Well, you don't have to set my bar real high.
Right, yeah.
I never be over that budget, but it ties my hands, because I trust that that's the money you say you're going to spend and you're going to need.
I'd like to be able to, the whole forum, I'm not really huge on the, I like to have that word set right now. Pardon me. I'd like to be able to build what we got bigger, because it's, you know, through just AP and stuff like that as opposed to homes.
All right, party group, we're moving on. Uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Agenda additions. I'm the guilty party, bless you.
I have agenda additions.
That's right. Okay, so number seven, council needs to be your interlocal agreement, special county dispatch services. Just bring something back to your attention. And then number eight is what councilman Dowell handed out.
Stabilization of the city attorney's salary.
Okay.
I've already passed them all out.
Okay. So, whole business, number one, planning building ordinance to rezoom from R1 to R5 property North Coker in Houston Street, second reading, Mr. Bell.
Mayor, Councilman Spirit, here tonight for the second reading of the rezoom request from R1 to R5 on the property of North Coker in Houston. I've made one of you a copy of the proposed buildings that Mr. Brown has proposed for that. We've got two parcels there. You'll notice that they're completely different designs so that they don't blend together the way they're situated on the property. There will be no variances requested. And we would like to have that approved for the second reading.
I'm confused, Sonny, where are we looking at?
The first sheet that you got there, that's unit number one. The front door will face Houston Street. And the second one is unit two, and that will face Coker Street.
This?
Yes, a two-story.
So, all right, hold it. This, this, last month I was told what the proposal was to build there was the same thing that's up there on Dogwood Street.
No, that's, that was what you were presenting last month. No, I said it would be the quality of those there on Dogwood. It would be the same footprint or the same design.
Well, but Mr. Brown said to me, he's going to build the same thing that's on Dogwood, which personally I would like.
Well, that's, that is what is, like I said, the first sheet there, that is the one that you, we've had, you know, from day one. And that will, the front door will face Houston Street.
Where's the parking? Does it have that parking lot?
Parking will be on the side on Coker, but the front door will be facing Houston.
Parking for both units are going to be over there?
Yes, on Coker. Yes.
That's the two-story.
Yes.
But this here is the one that's going to face Houston, right?
Yes, yes, that would be front door to Houston.
You don't have a picture of this one?
No.
Okay, that's what's confusing.
Yeah, well, one of them is.
We just wanted to build a one-story and a two-story here.
You don't have, you don't have a photo of it.
I don't have the hard transfer with them, but that's a wrong.
I mean, I, I go back to the discussion last month, I mean, like, like this, for example, of, I don't know if it was brought, or who brought this up, of, you know, no garage. The, the, these units that got built up there, whatever the site is, I don't know what they're called, but, you know. I don't know how we control this or how we manage this, but in my opinion, rental property the first month that got built isn't probably, it's 10 years from now. You know what I mean? It's, and what's, to me, goes back to the quality of that building, what it built. I mean, you see a full brick structure 10 years from now generally still looks nice, right? You see these duplexes, you know, they're all over Fort Smith or some greenwood, that you got to do a double take to know whether it was a house or a duplex. You know what I mean? I mean, I go in a lot of places, and I see a lot of them that, that it doesn't look like a duplex.
Yeah, I, yeah, I bring up the ones down here on Bell Road and them.
I mean, those things are what, they're 20 years old at least.
All brick.
You know, all brick, look nice, got garages, you know? I mean, this, this to me is inviting trouble, you know? If you built that the way that picture looks.
Hey, well, that's a positive change in it being built.
But that, 10 years from now, somebody's going to put a cardboard over the driveway, is what they're going to want to do, you know?
Not unless it's approved and it's got to be designed.
Which, well, and I guess that's my point.
The houses right there are not dry, they are, are poor.
I mean, I don't know what our, what our regulations, I guess, are, there's no standards or that sort of thing. I mean, I'm not against duplexes just because it's physical, I'm not against, you know, rental property or anything. You can build a single family unit.
Well, and you know, there is a new state law that we cannot dictate what the outside of the house is going to look like, or the material that's being built. If theoretically, in the state of Arkansas right now, if they could build that house with a 10, half a size, that was done at the last, the last legislature meeting. But they took that away from Houston.
So you don't have anything to repeal in all our ordinances tonight? You don't have anything to repeal in all of our ordinances tonight because of that state law? About what the house is going to look like?
No.
I just want to.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, it would.
I bought that to the nail, Matt, it's, we tell you that I bought it to the nail, but it went down, went down hard.
So we need to repeal all of our regulations that we have in force? So we need to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I mean, we can't have all those super secret state laws, right?
No.
Mike, do you recommend doing that?
At some point, it's going to have to happen. I think we're all a little afraid of, of, next legislative session, that Mr. Pitts back here will, he was bad, he was a bad bill, but he got through.
So, Sonny, outside of our subdivision regulations, when we step into one of these infield situations like we have now, we don't really have a lot of regulations on residential buildings. Is that correct?
That's true. I mean, when they go through the planning commission, for example, there, there was a duplex project that was proposed for Homer Street. And it was a cookie cutter duplex that went, made a semi-circle on Homer Street that they wanted to piecemeal it out. They didn't want to come in and do the infrastructure and all that. Well, the planning commission turned it down several times, because one, the type of construction that they were doing there was up standard we built. And that they wanted to do one and two at a time and move the infrastructure as they went around. In other words, they didn't want to make investment in the property. So, you know, that's, that is our main thing, is the, is the planning commission looking at these things and saying, that is not good for the city to bring.
You know, even though the states put this on us where we can't control the structure as far as what materials is made out of, in other ways, the skin of cat. I mean, we go in and put extensive landscaping regulations in place. There's other things we can do, correct?
Somewhat, you know, with this new law, we can't even require them to put, put garages in certain areas. I mean, for example, if somebody came in with a subdivision and it went down the road and each house was the same, or the garage facing the same way, we could tell them, we want this one turning one way and one the other. We don't have that capability anymore.
Obviously, some Lindsay character or something that's building a whole bunch of stuff has pushed this, senators, and they're all for sale, I'm sure.
Northwest Arkansas and the real estate.
So I'm probably not too far off of Lindsay or somebody like that.
Yeah, you're right on, on the line.
But you can go, but cities could go back in and say, all right, we're not going to sell 65-foot wide lots. We'll just require the subdivision regulations to be 100. And there's other ways, there's other things we could do in there.
Zoning regulations. We can, they can't affect that. We can change zoning.
You know, there's, there's cities all over the state that's looking at this right now. I'm, I'm monitoring what they're doing. Again, like Senator Pitts said, we're hoping that the, that the next section that Hoover is will prevail and take, give us back that ability. Because it's, it, to me, it's a bad law. I said, I went to the Arkansas Planning Commission, I went to the municipal league, I called Senator Pitts, I called Lee Johnson. I mean, I was, I was on the phone with everybody that I could, and, and it just, it was one of those things that it just went down anyway.
So, we kind of stray a little bit, I don't know what we're talking about.
We do that.
We do do that, and, and we don't, it's, we're in the halls tonight, and I know we're known for midnight, and that's cool.
I believe this is going to make a nice addition to the area. Again, the way that they're going to be positioned on a lot there, there's not going to be any variances required. The one will have forces in the front and rear, the other one all brick. It'll be facing Coker driveway, it'll be facing Gary, and, Houston, excuse me, I don't, it'll be facing Houston, and the driveway will be on the Coker Street side. The second one will have, is probably on the Coker Street side.
So they're saying that the second story, I mean, the, the single story will be all brick? The two-story is going to be all, you know, silent?
It's going to be brick and silent.
There's going to be brick, the redistance here just shows all silent.
It'll have brick weight, brick.
Brick on the bottom, I think.
So back to this, you know, the pictures that we showed me the last time, and I made a comment about, you know, everybody takes their trash cans all up on the front porch displayed for the street because they didn't have a garage, which is okay. We're not going to go in and require storage areas to be built or screening to be built where they can have, make them have.
Jamie does. Excuse me, Jamie does, he puts string around his area for trash cans.
It's just not reflected here.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I'll need you to extend the microphone, and if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. I need you to come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please. If you'd like to speak, just me. Son, if you would, thank you.
Hollywood Drive 1445, this will circle, regular in Arkansas. Number one, I would like to know the procedure again. Procedure, procedure. The citizens who live in this area haven't even had a chance to know that things are changing. Now we have a two-story, not only duplex, it's a two-story. How does that happen? That citizens don't even have a chance to, they don't even know what's going on here. He comes in here with his clue, shows you, we don't know anything about it, because he skipped the variation part of it. So none of that, nobody else is going to go back for that meeting, so nobody knows. I'm surprised again, here we are, in a meeting, I live over there, I was never noticed, I may 300 feet away from there.
You have, you have rental property.
I have a rental, and, yeah, yes, excuse me, I have a rental property, not really yet, but I have a property over there. I should have been noticed along with all the other people on my street, who were not noticed. And here I, again, I come in surprised, now we have a two-story. If those people across the street and closer than I am heard about the two-story, you couldn't fetch a bottle of wine, they would have been here, but we had no idea.
Well, I think the home across the street from this is a two-story home, is it not? Across the older, old room, there on the corner, that's an older two-story house there, it's been.
Two-story house?
It's been directly across the street.
That's a two-story apartment, I suppose. And right down from two-story apartment.
Yeah, two-story is really an issue.
Right down the road from the other big block.
Well, did this, this go to the planning? Would this, the, this go to the planning commission?
Yeah.
The not the two-story.
This is the first time we've seen this two.
The two-story, I, I've been to all the planning commission meetings and I've never seen a planning commission design.
The planning commission does not approve plans for houses. They, the planning commission, uh, deals with subdivisions, variances, and that's it. Uh, once this, uh, once the area is zoned and the, everything else is done, the, if, if a person had then wants to build a house, if it falls within our building code, we can't tell them they can't build it there.
Well, if you can tell them they can build, they can't put a, a, a carport on a property, or they can't put an accessory building because you don't like it, why can't you say they can't do other things?
I think that's a question for Mr. Hammy.
That's what we're just talking about, is that the state is taking away our ability to regulate those types of things. And, uh, so we can't tell somebody what type of carport they put there, where they put the carport there. There's very limited regulation that we can do at this point.
Okay, so we technically, my constitutional right as a landowner to find out, to, to keep the area the way that it was, and we have no rights whatsoever there on that. I believe that just went to court and Judge Dela said that's not proper. You can't just do stuff without noticing people.
I think you're talking about two issues, and what you're referring, in the letter that you sent to me was, is referring to.
That was for television.
Pardon?
That was for television.
Right, which is not the same thing as what Mr. Hammy's referring to. You're, you're questioning the, the notice procedure is understandable, and you, you've made that clear in, in, in meetings and, and reference in your letter also. And, and if you'd like to pursue that, that you're more than welcome to that, but that's not the same thing that we're talking about now. What, what they're talking about now is something that was passed by legislation this last session to take away the city's ability to control what is, in the past, before that was put in place, we did have control on a carport, a metal carport. Metal carports were not allowed in the city of Greenwood without a, uh, variance. And, and certainly, that was brought to planning commission, and that was that process. Now that this legislation has been passed last year, we don't have that. So you, to answer your, your thought, I think some of that is correct, and some of that has been taken away, not from just you, but from this council, that process. But mixing the process complaint, if you will, with the process of what's being presented now is not the same thing.
So there's no oversight whatsoever on what's to be built on that property?
Again.
Yes, if, if it passes our building code, it can help.
Yeah, we, we still have our code.
Very, very generally, we, we can, we can tell how far back that setback line has to be, and that's not, and we cannot regulate what I'm, a building that you're gonna put on there.
Why would, and I can just ask a, a question if, if you don't mind, why would we restrict a two-story building on this particular street? Why would we do that? Why is a two-story?
I'm conscious of the neighboring, uh, the neighbor's privacy.
Okay, yes.
I wouldn't wanna be next to that two-story.
Two-story homes are built all over the city of Greenwood, I don't know of any restrictions that we have on two-story building.
A two-story, is that gonna be a single-family home that's the two-story?
It's a duplex.
It's gonna be a duplex, it's gonna be a ton of people in that building.
Well, they could.
In addition to the, in addition to the duplex that's right next to it.
How many, they can ask a question.
That's what I'm gonna tell you.
How many people are you gonna rent your, your rent house to?
They say one rent house.
If, 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 if ten moved in there and you were still getting your rent, would you allow them to be?
No, I certainly would not allow that.
We, again, we certainly cannot allow or disallow certain, we don't have, we don't have. On the subject of Hammy, council.
I would like that is approved for a second, if you would.
And this is going for R one to R five? Is it necessary to have you clearing the emergency?
No, we, we took that out.
I think that was removed, I saw, I think, wasn't it?
It wasn't removed, it got, you know, it stays in there.
This reading?
Not.
No, let's go for the, for reading.
That area on Clinic Street down there where those duplexes are, uh, the matter.
Yes.
That's not R five, is it?
No, that is an R two.
I guess I will remove that emergency clause for the next, that they're reading, if it goes on secondary.
And, and, Tim, say, say it happened in reverse, if somebody came down there and wanted that lot there on the corner of Clinic, Ten, wherever that is, if they bought a empty apartment, wanted to build, uh, same thing, really, they would have to, ask you guys to read something from.
The R one? I did, I have a, I, the R five deal just doesn't sit real well with me. I think I wanted to approve this last time on the first reading, but I just, I don't understand.
R five is for infilling on, on the lots that haven't been built on in, in years. Uh, this is, it's not something that's unique to Greenwood. It is, uh, something that, uh, is being used for that purpose in older, for, in older, uh, parts of cities to increase the, the, the building in those areas where, uh, the infrastructure is already there. And, uh, uh, this way, we're maintaining good quality homes in there if they, yes, they're duplexes, but duplexes are good quality homes. And it gives the ability for people that, uh, whether they're starter homes, or whether they're people that are moving out of residence and want something, you know, less maintenance, and that gives them that ability.
Sonny, is this a single-story all brick?
Yes.
And this is the plan, what's going to go there?
Yeah.
That and that two-story, too?
Yeah.
So the single story is all brick, the second story is not, or the two-story?
And, you know, and that was, uh, that was an consideration, we didn't want them to look alike. We didn't want the two looking like cookie cutter, uh, properties, we wanted them to break them up and, and, uh, be different. And that's, you know, that's what they teach in these classes.
Is that part of, is that, that, why would, I, I guess my question is, why wouldn't this just be R two, you want?
Because R two, you would be, you would all, you would be getting back into spot zone. And with R five, R five is, is our comprehensive plan for that area. And so that means that, that those properties are available for R five, but they have to come to you first. If it was R two, then, you know, you can put a duplex anywhere you want to do, they wouldn't even have to come to you. They'd come to the planning department, say, I wanna build a, a duplex there, it's R two, you know, here's my, my plans. And if it's built, it, it filled in our, uh, building, uh, code, then, or then it would be written.
And with the R five, I mean, it, it could, it opens up, it could be a single family or it could be a multi dwelling down there, it's probably, you know?
It's, it's, all those empty lots have to be duplex. If somebody wants to come and build a single-family residence there, but they do. And they don't have, it doesn't have to come to you guys at that point, because it's already R one. This is, you know, this was recommended by Jim Von Cunklin, it's been recommended by the, you know, APA. And, uh, of going in this direction to energize the older portions of cities.
Well, I do like, uh, Rod's idea of saying that, well, we can't do some things by, uh, you know, our subdivision regulations, but maybe we can do something by, you know, landscaping wise or whatever.
I don't know, I'd be glad to give you a copy of the, uh, of the state law, the way it's written now, so that you can look at it. And, uh, again, the, uh, Arkansas Planning Association and every city in, in the state is looking at what they can do to, to either, if we're gonna have to live with it, here's what we're gonna have to do with it, or, uh, again, I think that the next time that they, the set, uh, legislature meets in session, I think that, uh, this will be used, because it's not a good law.
I guess until then, we can use zoning to, you know, kinda like this point right here, just go no and don't rezone it, wait till, wait till the legislature comes back and is more beneficial to cities where we can control what our growth looks like. But then you make a decision not to grow.
Exactly. And that was the point behind the planning commission and everybody else. To continue Greenwood to grow in areas that we have the infrastructure from, because we were not, we're not reaching out there with new infrastructure, so.
And that's better for us as a city, when we can fill in and use the infrastructure that we currently have in place. We're not adding to, the impact is lower on existing citizens here, other than feeling like your property's been negatively affected.
Not the only one.
Some of these properties that, uh, that we have been, that have been built on and, and are looking to be built on, uh, you know, you can ask people, when was the last time there was something built on here? They can't remember. The houses over there on Dogwood and Cedar, they can remember nineteen sixty-eight, torn eight, and it's been empty ever since. And here it is, two thousand nineteen, we've got structures on there, and we've got people living there, we've got families.
Well, I'd like to, uh, you know, I mean, there still seem to be some unanswered questions in my mind, I'd like to, you know, table it for, uh, for a month, just kind of, work at this, is, uh, more about this, uh, law that's been imposed on us and, uh, I like the idea of, you know, just going ahead and, and, uh, doing the, the R five, because I think that is, you know, out of the way to help our city fill in stuff there. It's just that, uh, annoying, kinda what can be put on there, we don't have too much of a say as far as the, uh, outer structure, everything like that.
You know, that he could still build a single-family dwelling, there's nothing to keep him from doing that, right?
Well, I mean, usually investors, that, these.
For sure, but I mean, you know.
If there was somebody who wanted to build a single-family residence there, they would've been built there for the last twenty years. We've got, we've got an investor here that's trying to build a nice structure there, and, yeah, that, he's thinking on making a profit off of it. That's what everybody does when they build out, except he's gonna have control of it for, for years. He's gonna be in charge of the maintenance and, and, uh, that's.
I mean, I, you know, I, I keep sounding like I'm against duplexes, and I'm not, I mean, they filled this room up with people up there on, uh, Lincoln Street. You know, next to Guy Moss, and about, we're gonna build a duplex, and it's terrible, and it's the worst thing you could ever do. Same thing in, in Bell Dish, lots have been sitting there empty all our lives. And it's one of the nicest buildings on the block, you know, she built a duplex, but she built it nice. I don't have the same feeling I have about this, just to be honest with you. I mean, those are nice buildings, they got garages there, I like the way they're built, they look nice. I think they'll last for years to come, looking nice. We can't control how it looks, I can't, I, if you're, if you're gonna build this thing and that's what you wanna build, then we can't control that. Our only choice to control is zoning, at that point. If, 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 if he wanted to build the same thing that, that the lady built on Lincoln Street, I, I don't think I'd have any problem with it, but.
Well, he was, you know, originally, he was gonna build two of the, the ones that you have a copy of there. Uh, the brick ones? Yeah, the, uh, question then was that he was gonna need a variance for it, and nobody, you know, that was a, a bad word because he was going to ask for seven and a half foot, uh, variance on that back side.
Did he have to have a variance on the ones on Dogwood?
No, not that I know of. And so with this design.
I mean, they're not brick.
Like I said, with this design, it, uh, it didn't require variance and, and, uh, it broke up the, uh, the design of the two houses, these structures. Uh, felt like it was a better, better bang for the buck and, and also, uh, looked better for the neighborhood.
I, I would like to add something as we're, as we're into this, I think we need to wrap it up, we need to move on to other things. We had a motion on the floor, but certainly to add, one, I think you need, and as council, I think you need to remember how important it is to rely upon folks that are in place to do what they're designed to do and what they're in place to do, and one of those being your planning commission. If the planning commission is presented with, with these items and then they see, see fit to bring it to your attention, I think obviously you can refuse it or, or accept it and move on down the road, but on, on a personal level, I think sometimes we put too much personal taste in what we think something looks like and how it looks. And it should not be about that. I don't particularly, I'll just throw my personal taste, I'd like to see a carport garage on, on both of these things. But that's not, that's my taste, that's not guidelines, that's not codes, that's not anything else. Uh, but you gotta, you gotta permission in place to, to bring this to you, and if they're bringing it to you as approved, I think there should be some consideration as to what they've done and what they've looked at. Again, you have the right to, to reject it, obviously, in this council.
Well, because we're, uh, put up here by the people.
Correct. Uh, uh, exactly, I'm not diminishing.
It's not the people that put us up there, we're the ones that put them, we're there.
But, but to, but to look at it as, as, as a, you have to look at it for everybody, and I, and I know you do, I'm not saying you don't, I'm not trying to diminish what you're doing or what you're not doing. You gotta look at it for everybody, you know, not just.
No, I think you're making a, a very valid point.
If I wanted to say no because I didn't like the style of it, and I'll say this too, on, on behalf of it, if you will, and, and, you know, this is just personal, this is not mayor talk, and this is up in Northwest Arkansas, I've visited some areas that are, that have nothing but this, and that is, that's exactly what they're building now. Most of those I saw garages on, pleasant, they're very, that's all, I mean, the whole neighborhoods are those, that's what they are. And they're not brick, they're, they are what they are, so, anyway.
Well, those were built from basically scratch neighborhoods, new.
Yeah, it's a new subdivision, it's a whole subdivision, exactly, yeah, yeah, absolutely. But the R five, but the, the R five discussion and the R two, because I think the council accepted R five, yes, am I correct on that?
That's been approved, that's one of our comprehensive plans on our map, it's, it's, it's there.
So, that doesn't mean you're gonna agree with every time something's brought to you, it's, it's approved here today, and that's fine, I just, I guess I'm just trying to make a point.
It's on the map, and it's approved enough for this area.
Right.
Yeah, for that area.
Well, for the area, yes, right?
Yeah.
Well, I had a reasonable request for purpose, grabbed both R one and R five. The master plan says this is where we want to be R five, we have to rezone the property.
Right, not right.
I say that, Jim Von Cunklin, is, you know, you don't, you couldn't physically go into these, this area and say, okay, this is R five, this is R two, that, that, that should be spot on. If you say, this is our master plan, this area here is R five, this area over here is R one, this area over here is R three, nothing but mo-, uh, moles, you know, that's, that's your comprehensive plan. Here's, here's our, uh, commercial area. All of that is, is on the comprehensive plan, and you guys approved it. You approved it with the, the two areas of R five, the one north and the one over on, off of Black Road. And this is just one of the parcels in the midst of all of that, that, uh, that we're asking to rezone it to R five. So it's the main and build two duplexes on it.
Mayor, I, I think, yes, but, as I understand it, the planning commission didn't actually approve this, what we're looking at today.
The planning.
If it meets the regulations, they don't have to.
They don't approve the actual plans of, of.
Right, no, I don't, I didn't mean to say they approved these plans, they approved.
They did, they just see the, the original plan with the brick from there, uh, but it was gonna require a lot of variances. And, uh, I mean, they've looked at it, uh, if, uh, it's, it's just like, it's just like Sean Lynn's property out there. It's been approved, uh, but they're not going to look at every duplex that is being built up there, every design. If it comes in. If it comes in and it meets our building code and our standard, then gone, right in permit for it.
If he wants to paint them all deep, there's no building to do anything about it.
Not really, not according to the state law.
I know we've had lots of discussion on it, but I think it's still warrants, kind of just to, I was to make the motion that we table it and give it some more thought. You know, just about, I'd say, all the reasons, you know, either why we, I mean, I'm all for the, if somebody's to rezonate R1, R5, I, I end that argument, but, but also have to lay in with saying that we have to.
They're going to put this man off for a year or whatever to, you know, from the time that we do the studies and try to get the state law passed and everything else that we're going to tell them that we're not going to do any more R5s.
Well, no, I don't think that's it, you know, but I just think that you.
I mean, they came in with a plan and we asked for more information on it. You brought in more information on it and now we want to change our mind and I don't understand it. It was approved on first reading and it, and when you guys, one of the things that Tim and, and Lynn said, well, I would like to see more information on it. Well, I brought you more information on it and it seems like now we're having second thoughts. And I don't.
Well, we've got a motion, sorry, we have a motion on the floor for table. Yes.
Greg.
Have a second.
I say, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Nope.
Mr. Powell?
I have staying.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Jared?
Yep.
Wouldn't vote for this majority.
What does that do? That just leaves it on the agenda?
With files and it's just nothing. So it almost hasn't been, uh?
Unless there's another motion.
It doesn't have a reading, second reading, it doesn't have a, uh?
I mean, firstly, I have a long history with this neighborhood. I mean, it was kind of my neighborhood, my own neighborhood. And, I mean, I think it would be an improvement for the neighborhood. I can, I can say that.
Totally.
My grandparents' house, Stuart's grandparents' house, some of my friends' houses that, that are there, they don't have carports.
Absolutely.
They're very much in disarray. So, I know, which perhaps hit me come up front, if you want to speak. I've got to be frank.
Part's great.
Thank you. I personally don't have a problem. Okay, do we have another motion? I'll make a motion to accept it, second reading. You have a motion to accept the second reading?
We're getting all this right.
Will I hear a second?
You have another vote, are you?
All right. I'll make the motion that, to accept it for a, the second, to accept.
I'll make it the second?
Yes. Right? Yes.
Put on a second reading. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
I have staying.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cipari?
Without a majority.
Most of us pass.
And that was the, without a majority?
We've got to have a majority. Without it, we can't, not going to have one with a majority. Do I do, can I do this? I vote yes.
Yeah? Yeah, there is, we can do that. So that puts it on the second reading, by Tom Lonely, I guess.
Right. And we get removed, we merge the clause.
Yeah, that's, that's what we discussed, the null objectives to that. An ordinance amending ordinance number 1009 for the purpose of rezoning, start copying the City of Greenwood, amending their rezoning act on the City of Greenwood and for other purposes. It's under the.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Number two, city attorney repeal and replace franchise tax ordinance.
This is Mr. Powell, Powell's out the, I don't know the three, and I think he's kind of going hand in hand, we're going to get together, business like that. But I think we both agree that, um, we're just going to table this until after the municipal meeting and kind of look at what Conway's doing up in northwest Arkansas. It really doesn't fit what we're willing to do there. And I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we'll both leave together and address it.
The franchise and the impact?
Right, at the same time.
I, I tried, I visited with him earlier. I've already been visiting Conway and I wanted to kind of look up a few people in the municipal league, which I'm on Tim, with myself, Ralph Maker, K C or going, and you, Mayor, there's a few of us. Any sexual time when I can kind of talk to him.
Would you please repeat once?
Siri wants to know.
You think municipal league sounds like Siri, I think.
Maybe it did. I called Tom's wife all ago.
So that was your fault?
She called me back, I guess. Anyway, so I'd like to table it, uh, well, I'd like to just, I'll bring it back on up. So I'd like to table it down there at this point. And we'll bring it back up tonight.
So we're tabling items two and items three?
Yeah, we'll do separate votes on them.
Okay, thank you.
I think about the table, I think.
Yes.
I make a motion that we table, number two, the repeal and replace.
Have a motion.
Second.
That's a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. 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 McDaniel?
Number four's already been covered and I think Chief would like to go on before he passes up here in front of everybody. So we're going to, we're going to let, you're talking on the inter, interloable agreement, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to move up, because I know he's been here.
Mayor, Councilman Stare, Mr. Handy. From my point of view, I think it's premature to agree to this agreement with the county for two reasons. One, we are waiting for enforcement to give us, and they still need a week to get together to pose on what the cost and it could be to a dispatch for us, so that enter this agreement before hearing their failures and what they can provide. I'm just pretty sure you do that. Two, I still, in my belief, well, on a couple grounds. One, they're getting this new tax from the cellular phone thing and I think it's premature for them. They come to us and ask for money before they see what's actually coming in. And if they are going to get this money and it's additional money, I would say that they're all going to get, then are they going to back off the amount they pay on the amount that they're going to receive? That's not questions of an answer for me. It's kind of here it is and you need to prove this. And I don't think that's fair to us or the taxpayers. I know that the judge broke down where the county sales tax goes. I didn't get the read over too thoroughly, but I think our citizens do pay two taxes and I think they're getting local tax or service that the county should provide. But in the long run, we can't talk to ourselves. We've got to be able to check out with somebody and waiting on enforcement, I think's the idea that we need to think about. And also, I'm hoping there's still another meeting that we can attend to, to maybe try to persuade them if we go this way with them and we can start out with one and work our way up. To me, I think radio traffic is far less than, turn the radio down, I bet there's silence most of the time. And that's because most of us have terminals in our car and we do most of our work on those terminals rather than to check out someplace and check back in. So, I just think if you look at this agreement, yeah, I think if we have to march to agree to it before it goes off and to enter into this agreement now without giving the numbers enforcement, I just wish I were.
But ultimately, the cutoff by the county is just on non-emergency calls, correct? I mean, the citizens of our town aren't going to be in harm's way or whatever. If we're not, if we don't agree to pay this 29 grand, we're still going to get backed up call if you guys get the gunfight. The sheriff's department's going to have to come down here when y'all say we helped and they're going to come to our spot.
Yes.
It is non-emergency.
Right. I just want to make that clear for the record that they're not going to answer calls if somebody calls and says, my cat's in a tree at 9:39 to try to call Greenwood Police Department tonight, it would go to the Sebastian County Dispatch.
Right.
That would no longer be a service.
Correct.
So.
But you wouldn't have access to warrant checks, okay?
We can check warrant computers. Someone has to confirm that warrant, so. You know, anyone can call and confirm warrant and they're not going to let charge you. You know, if someone pulls up a warrant in a different county, they're going to call Sebastian County and say, hey, this warrant, have yours stood.
Well, I'm sure, I don't know if that qualifies as a non-emergency anyway. I mean, checking, going back for a warrant, that seems pretty.
We still have to be able to check out with somebody.
Sure.
I mean, that's the issue. I think you're, I'm not going to talk about.
A lot of it's not a safety issue for the people of Greenwood. You know all about this warrant, any, between you and the fire chief, by as far as dispatch goes.
I really, I mean, unless it's captain, sure, it really doesn't affect us. I mean, gas calls are all emergencies, so.
I mean, I like you, I don't like correcting letters.
I, I don't like the way, the amount of time they gave us to, to transfer over this type of agreement among us. But it's kind of like with the radars. I mean, they came to us and said, hey, we're switching lanes. You can either buy a radar by the state or you can be talking to yourself. And that was a big investment for us that really hasn't panned out to be all the place it was going to be. But we have got to be able to talk to somebody. The biggest issue, we have a great work relationship with Fort Smith, I talked to the chief today. And if they can provide the same service at a less cost, then that's something to look at.
And they could let me get somebody for somebody else.
One of my big hangups on this thing all along too has been, if, if this is about radio traffic, our charge ought to be based on our percentage of radio traffic, not our percentage of population. I mean, they've got all these statistics about radio traffic and it's, we're going to pay based on population.
Well, they, but if you, if you attend the meeting, they say both. And at the last meeting that I attended, when the chief wasn't able to go, Captain Wofford went, questioned, Captain Wofford questioned the judge and about those captains I had called because even that did not look accurate to him. And I'll just say to the judge, well, what is it? And Richie went to his calculator and actually told him what it was and it was still off. So there was, there was that discrepancy, if you will, if that's what you want to call it.
I would rather than say this is every time we click.
And that's, and I asked that. I said that very specifically. I said, can you tell me what that means, radio traffic? And that is, anytime anybody is hitting that button, whether it's to check in or go to lunch, I don't know, everything you do on the radio, but that's every, that's what it's representing.
It's not that they're, that's, well, that's a call.
That's not what's in this.
That's, that's what that's supposed to be.
It says specifically that these numbers.
I'm sorry, that's right. After he said that, then he went back and read that.
Well, it says those numbers.
That's right.
Which, which is, it seems to be inaccurate. I don't know.
The other thing is too, I think we're still looking at the unknown. I was looking at the Department of Finance Administration and they said that, you know, one thing that the prepaid cell phones, that the, the fee on them for the 911 is going to go increase a 10% fee on every time somebody files a, a prepaid phone. And they said that that fee alone is going to increase, you know, $10 million. You know, it was $5 million that they were collecting and now they're going to be collecting 15 million.
And you also got to take into consideration that they're consolidating I-1 centers. So there's going to be more money distributed out to the less centers, like Allen was losing their dispatch. So I'm sure that portion that Allen was getting is now going to the other ones that are going to, but, so they should get an increase offered out also.
And that was acknowledged by that, by that group, when I say that group, the judge and the sheriff and all those there, that what you referred to. But no one there was ready to acknowledge exactly what that meant. It would be better.
Even in here, they're not acknowledging what's going to come from the new 911 cell phone.
Exactly.
And, and they act like it's an unknown, but you can figure stuff out. You can call and figure out, how many cell phones are in Sebastian County and you multiply it by that figure and you know how much money's kind of coming. You could be off a little this or that. But there's a lot of money coming and they're not acknowledging it.
That's just from the, the prepaid, that increase, you know, they didn't include the cell phones, which is going to be doubled, you know, so they're, I agree with the broad system being.
Why don't they, they're backing off our sale, our worship.
That's right. When we, when we sign that contract and give them 27,996, they're not giving it back.
No, and.
Little one-time fee?
No, I think, yeah, one-time here, there. I, I was like, Councilman Terry, I mean, my, when I first heard this and it was presented by the judge and those that are charged, my reaction is, as a mayor of this town, that we can't afford not, not to do anything and everything all tires of our citizens.
Right.
And, and as it was being explained and we learned a little more into it, and I was ready not to cave because, one, that's not my, just my decision, although it was, it was pointed to me that you're the one that does this, Mayor. You, you go back and tell your council, well, I inform someone that I don't go back and tell you guys any, anything anymore than somebody else goes to or court tells.
Right.
So I may suggest something, but that's not how that works as we all know and it shouldn't work that way. But, and, and then when they gave the shortlist of what we would be excluded from or not have to, to our ability, I didn't know what that shortlist meant. I don't know what all those things mean. I know a couple of them and then the first lines, I think the chief will even say, that's not too bad. But then as we looked at that order, maybe it is things we need, can't do without. I think the best case scenario for, for us, possibly, you know, from all weird things, sometimes good things come, was at the end of that first meeting and Carl Gethkin looks at the, the chief and I says, almost jokingly, what do you, what would you pay us to do your dispatch? And I said, well, let me know. The good news for Mr. Gethkin, he knows what we, right now, we're looking at $29,000. He could go back to me and say, we'll only charge you 27.5 and it's a better deal. And I'm not, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but we are, I think it's very important that we wait on that. And if they were going to cancel us tomorrow, we might be over a barrel more than we would like to believe. But we're talking March and surely the goodness by then will give us an answer. And, and you probably would end up, as I think you said today, Chief, better, I want to roll county in, but I think it's not end up with better dispatch than the better.
Well, the fact is they're getting paid, their turnover rate's far less, I think they're probably getting better training because of the ones that go into the dispatch. And, I mean, I can, I can tell you maybe one name with dispatch right there. I used to tell you, probably had all their numbers, the call was on trial. It's just a big turnover. And today's the information I got, they're down six, so they're not supposed to have right now, but people are just walking out the door. So, I mean, that's an issue for us too, that it's a safety concern if you're not up to par or getting out the information, which I don't give you that, but, nah, if we're not getting certain information that we need or I have to, I stop call, I can get somebody hurt. And we have no say over who they hire or what the discipline is. There's just nothing that helps us make sure we're getting the service that we need by paying this money.
Obviously, $29,000 means nothing to us if, if we, if we suspect we have not good service. I don't think that's.
They've put a cost on our non-emergency phone calls. And our non-emergency phone calls are worth $29,000 to them. It seems like for $29,000, the police chief could say, Fred, you're taking the cell phone home tonight and you answer the call if anybody calls 996, 607, whatever, whatever police department's phone number is. Does that work?
It would, but I think when they cut off dispatch, we can't check out on calls and It would, but I think when they cut off dispatch, we can't check out on calls, and that's a little bit.
I'll make a motion, we table there.
Yeah, the only reason it's on your agenda was for me to make sure that you had in your hand, and I hope you do, this, this last memo from the judge that did go into a little bit more of explaining, or in his words, what the county cell stacks and how that was done. Because that was one of the biggest questions, one of the main questions that was asked, why are we having to double pay and that sort of thing? So I just want to make sure you have this in mind as we, as we move forward. But I think, as the chief said, it's the wisest thing to wait, and you're right, and force you enough to see what they can do. I'm sorry, so we have a motion to table?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Yes.
Have a motion. That's a, that's a good one, Mr. Powell.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Your leader?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you, Chief.
All right.
Yes, absolutely.
There's any questions on, on three, four, also, uh, let, you know, Marina Phoenix, the officer I was almost in, or at, he resigned, so we are, for an officer again, I start all over.
Who is that person?
Marina Phoenix. Uh, and he's just, he gosh, he's crazy, he's back in the U.S., uh, he's getting his scan done to make sure they got the cancer, and, uh, should have some.
Where's his cancer at?
Well, he's got some spots on his lungs, and then, uh, like, actually found some more spots on the limb. Uh, that was around his, uh, around his liver area.
I think they took some of his liver doing that.
This, this has been going on now about three years. How old is he now?
Our cat was just thirty-four now.
He operated twelve, twelve hours, I think, last time.
But when they got in there, it was a lot more extensive than, than what they wanted to get, so. Hopefully, they got, well, they're going to drive through pinpoint radiation on his lungs, was the plan, I got less. They said, "They got everything here, and I tried the pinpoint radiation."
Who did you say the policeman was?
Marina Phoenix.
You said Rena?
Marina.
One where Rena?
The one that just graduated academy, three months ago. She had an extended field tracking period, the traffic era, to where we like to have them. And she was on that last day, and, uh, I think she might saw the writing on the wall that she wanted, or we needed her to be, for us to feel safe, for her to be under by herself.
Is there a fundraiser, a sort of, a, a, a process?
Back going, but it's actually, uh, for both, uh, King Schuler's family and for Gosh, so splitting money over as a schedule.
Can you keep us updated on what's, how we can, uh, say, I don't know, we can't, no, we can't say, just let everybody know now what's going.
I already want to talk about the cat situation, it's, uh, made Facebook hit, but, uh, you know, like I did, and see you guys before, uh, you know, the funds, we had to ask for more, and I think we're accurately, where we was correctly approaching, where that additional money that we asked for was, was used up, and now that we're almost back to a new budget. I mean, this, this price stack for people now is going up and up, uh, I don't know where they come from, but, uh, the, the main issue is we don't have funds, so we stopped taking cats. Uh, it wasn't, I mean, I've seen cats, stray cats here from, I mean, the time I started, I hadn't found a frozen cat or starved cat yet, but they seem to be able to take care of themselves when they become, uh, wild cats. And, uh, we certainly like to take care of animals all we can, but we don't have funds, and that's all there is to it. I've seen a lot of different things on Facebook, really don't love cats. I don't particularly, I don't have a cat, but, wouldn't have a cat, but, I mean, I, uh, see a farm tank of cats, but we just ran out of funds, and, uh, we added ten thousand additional funds, and we used all that, too.
Plus five.
Plus five, we'll talk about that.
Fifteen thousand?
I think you added twelve, and, um, you're fifty-one, sixty-two over there. You guys have a good one, or is it? You have a life by which you build.
But the real number started out, you know, years ago, it, or ten thousand, went to twenty thousand, and, I mean, it's. It's just going, I don't know what the answer is, uh.
Ralph's got this real cool pen that he, he can look at on his cell phone. He just, you have to make the hole smaller.
Do we require folks to chip or?
Yes.
We require it. We have a one that's, uh, I would say, the numbers define every year the amount of animals that come in and actually get registered, and, and this is a free one, I've hit where he is, usually isn't. But I would say probably an eighth of the animals in Greenwood that are supposed to be registered, don't be registered. And that just prolongs the period of time it takes to find someone, get their animal back home, transport them, I mean, do it right there, instead of take them to the shelter, try to shelter fees and feed them, and, uh, so.
Like, yeah, what is the utilization of those?
It's at, probably at least a hundred and.
Eupenize?
Yeah.
Through that, Terry.
We're not getting any breaks, I haven't said that, I haven't. And some are best not to want straddles in their facilities, so they don't want to breed, and they're all in these places that come along. So it's just such, it's a tough spot to be in, and if you all have the answer, I'll listen.
Like a minute man?
Is there, is there a utilization? Is there coalition?
There are approved names.
Yeah, are there approved names?
There is, and, you know, we've, we've, uh, discussed it last year on what that period of time is. If Fluffy gets out and her owner's on vacation two weeks, and we euthanize her, Fluffy, after seven days, or, you know, some days, Allen.
Well, the penalties for not, not marking your animal should be much higher than four.
There you go.
And that way, there's some accountability for, you know, there's.
We're not, we're not making money off of anything, like, anything wrong.
Right.
Well, we can live with the problem.
That's right, you can deter people not being responsible, animals.
But most of these, that no one's, he can want to get them, no one's claiming them, so.
If they're chipped and you scan them, you know who they belong to.
I mean, truly, that's probably the biggest problem. It's not that Fluffy got out and we're all looking for Fluffy. It's, it's Fluffy had ten kittens, and we don't want kittens. They get dropped off, dog from the.
You're talking about animals that no one's claiming, that we're trying to find homes for, and, uh, and the man.
They're truly stray animals.
Well, there's ladies that would differ with that opinion, that were in my office for about an hour and a half. And I want to say kudos to, to Officer, uh, Dylan, or put Animal Control Officer, who helped deter escalation of, during that time of, of the, uh, video on Facebook and all of that, that it was getting kind of, uh, out of control and out of hand. Yeah, and, and anyway, Dylan, Dylan did a very, very good job, very professional job of meeting with those folks. I, truly, I had three ladies come to my office that are, that are a part of, I know, does anybody remember what that organization is? It's about spaying and neutering and releasing.
T and R.
T and R, or something like that, and so they were serious, and I don't, I didn't joke with them at all, because they are serious about it, and it's a serious, it is something that makes sense. Uh, but it was all about the feeding of the animals and all that, which I don't get. I mean, if you're feeding them and they're still leaving out there, you are, you're condoning them being out there, and they swear that they're not feral, that they're not wild, they're just somebody's cat. Anyway, uh, Dylan did a really good job, and so since that time, Dylan had a meeting with those folks, things have really calmed down, and we've not really seen anything, that doesn't mean it's not going to come back up. But that doesn't answer your question, what we do.
Well, I've got phone calls from my husbands, uh, I think were the main one, that put out shelters and, I, I, or open work. They want to raise funds to help the situation. It sounded like they would, I mean, I don't work with them, I'm not going to turn that light.
Now, barring the fact that I got two, uh, very, uh, what do you call those letters I received? Threatening letters from someone out of state, I kid you not, uh, about us, the city of Greenwood, and what we do to our animals, but, uh, threatening enough, I turned it over to the police department. I think last time I talked, I think you still kind of checking in with one of them, but, yeah, it's a problem, I don't know.
I was strongly encouraged that we don't, and don't that kind of support, uh, for cat houses and feeding out feral animals. I know, you know, or anyone, and all you have to do is Google it, and it says not to feed them. I mean, like I said, I haven't found a cat frozen, and they're going to that, I mean, even a house cat will bring in food. They're going to, they're going to survive, uh, some may say, but, you know, that's just a number, that's any animal, but, uh.
Animals are designed to live in those environments, whether it's a pig, or a cow, or a dog, whatever. You, you set them outside, I don't care how domesticated you think they are, they're designed to live like that. They'll like you.
Is everything out right?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, go on. Lord. Not you, it's Chief. Thank you. Uh, make sure I'm back in on one more here. Number five, there's a resolution adopting procedural rules. Just there, you have that.
Yeah, just same as last year, eighty-five. The way it is now.
Anything you want to change or? Oh, wasn't that funny?
No. I was just against it.
Wow.
Yeah.
Counsel, procedure rules, good? I make motion that we adopt the resolution. Have a motion?
Second.
Second to adopt.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Number six, human resource resolutions, and then personnel policy handbook for non-informed and full. Ms. Danielle.
Okay, so a couple of things are brought to my attention that we needed to add to the handbook, so that's what's in front of you. We do need to remove, uh, section one. After the information was presented to the department meeting this morning, uh, we decided to table, uh, the information for section one, uh, so we can discuss it further. We have some, uh, employees that have some questions on it. Um, so basically, what we're going to keep now, or asking to approve, is that, uh, on that page three, exhibit B, that stick time should only be used to, uh, get our employees to their full paycheck, not that it would ever, you know, exceed their amount of the forty hours. And then the other thing is, um, of course, we're going to remove that co-visibility also. Uh, that was something that, that municipal league encouraged us to add to our handbook, is that something that we're going to?
You may not even be seeing, I'm sorry.
Do they not have it?
I don't, no, did I have that in front of?
No, we were, there were addition.
Okay, I'm sorry, never mind. Uh, the other, no, not never mind, but.
You're right, just want to get out, it's just something that we had removed before we got to you, so.
So the thing is, we're removing the exhibit C right now. The stability, co-visibility that she had originally.
That whole thing.
That's going to be removed, don't consider it drawing exceeded, it's not important, and also.
Exhibit C, correct. Is this one of that? The comp time, or?
No.
No, no, no.
They don't have that.
Yeah, he's got it.
Okay, no, the exhibit D is the other item that we're going to keep.
And we know we keep coming back, and sorry to interrupt you, we know we keep coming back to you with this, with this stuff, what we, what we need to, that we, I feel it's important, as we meet once a month, the department is, and we talk about this, and it's not just my choice or Danielle's check, or choice that the department has kind of agreed, because after all, we're in charge of these, these personnel, so.
Well, and as things occur, so.
The living, breathing.
The new one, yeah, the revised is the real one.
Yeah.
The one you originally received in your agenda packet, I was emailing out a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Being that our lead's a little bit. It's, you have a lot, right? That's what she's bringing up, because still, it's still, and the other thing that we're going to keep is that, uh, exhibit D for her. Except, I don't know, is it exhibit C or B? Exhibit C, it's maybe in C now.
Yeah, she took the D. Over time, the C now, correct?
The revised section, that's all, let's, let's see. That we're, uh, we're adding to use comp time, and employees have to, have a request that means approval. We're having some instances where they're calling, end up warning, saying, "Hey, I'm going to use comp time for the rest of the week." And then we're just working it out, where there's projects that need to be done for the same, and we don't have enough employees to go to. So we're adding that, they have to get, pray to her, they'll want to use their comp.
Is part of that, I'm sorry, again, apologize. Is some of that something that we, that I was going to table, on the, on the other judge? You're good?
Page two, on the original, the vacation time, the, that's.
That's the type of.
So we're good? Okay.
So she asked me, passed, passed the resolution, minus section one, so, strike section one.
Just exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Yes, yeah.
Clear.
I'll make that motion.
That's not my problem.
Accept the amendments to the personnel clause handbook, excluding exhibit A and B.
Have a second? In a sec.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Number eight, city attorney salary by Mr. Howard Powell.
That's a petition. I passed this out earlier, and I think everybody up here knows, at least up here, knows what I'm doing, except for maybe Ralph, Ralph wasn't around when I established them on, the city clerk and this, and the mayor. Uh, and I said I was going to bring back the city attorney, and just never got around, just never got to it. So here we are, and we're required by state law to set the salary and ordinance for the city clerk and the city attorney. Not the mayor, we, we added the mayor, uh, but the same premises is still there in section one. Uh, we're setting a minimum and a, and a maximum salary to where, uh, we did the same thing with Charlotte, did the same thing with the mayor, all the city employees have the same thing. Uh, if Charlotte retires, and she's getting close to being eligible for retirement.
Are you?
Okay, Charlotte's already there, uh, when she decides to retire, the person that runs for office and replaces her will come in at the minimum annual salary. They may not be near as experienced as Charlotte, and we may leave them there. They may be more experienced than Charlotte, and we may move and look to what Charlotte made, maybe more. Uh, we have that option, the council has that option. If you'll, uh, if you'll stay with section one, if you'll look back to the two pages that I attached, you'll see the city attorney, the, uh, job description. This is out of, this, I got this off, online, it's the two thousand nineteen Municipal League Salary Survey for City Attorneys, and, uh, if you look at populations, uh, we are, we should be somewhere around Blalow, Malvern, Batesville, I'm sorry, Batesville, Malvern. We should be somewhere in that area. I kind of, I'll tell you where I think we're at. At, in two thousand and ten, we had, we're right now living with a population sign of eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. We had three thousand five hundred and two water meters set in two thousand and ten. Right now, we have three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven water meters set. If you take three thousand five hundred and two divided by eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two, average people per water meter in Greenwood's two point five five six. So if you multiply that by the number of water meters we have set today, and I got this information from the Water Department, Charlotte got it for me back at first of December. I'm sorry, I was messing with this first of December, and then I put it aside, Christmas come along and busy, and so I may be a little foggy. But if you multiply that, I think the conservative estimate right now is we have nine thousand six hundred and twenty-nine people in town. So, and I think it's probably off, I think we're a ten thousand population town when it's all said and done. So if you look at the towns that are about ten thousand, if you look at, uh, Mountain Home.
Well, Clarksville.
Here's one you want to do. That'd be, that's between, uh, Clarksville, Monticello.
Right.
Our bill being.
You can see where our average sal, uh, average annual salary is set. If you look, look at the second page from Monticello, Clarksville, Greenwood, Wind, Newport, Oceola, look, look at who has the lowest average annual salary. That would be us, and we're a larger town than those, those communities have not grown like we've grown. We're, we're grown, we're actually going to end up on the second page on the larger municipalities.
Let me ask a clarifying question.
Yes.
Are we not part-time?
We are part-time.
We should be in the part-time column.
We are, we are part-time.
There's a lot of difference in a part-time and a, and a full-time number, right?
You know, when they, uh, if, if you look, if you call the municipal, and you visit the municipal about it, they said that's a little bit in error, that they're, they're basically putting that in in what they, you know, they call, and they call the city clerk, the city clerk gives them a figure. And the truth is, some of these guys are working, uh, different hours, they're paid in different ways, so don't put a lot of stock in the part-time column, and. So don't put a lot of stock in the part-time column and the full-time, and there's not a full-time column. There's different arrangements with different ones. But taking that, I've come up, if you look at the minimum and average, the minimum annual salary and the maximum annual salary, I think that the minimum, that the fee, the fee would be $29,330.10. That would be the bottom. I think that would be fair. If our city attorney retires and somebody else run for the job, I think that would be fair on the bottom end, on the minimum end. On the maximum, I think it should be $43,996.70. Now, this is debatable, I'm asking y'all if y'all agree. Because I'm going to put it in for the second reading. I'm just asking for this to be put off for the first reading. But if y'all agree with that, I'm going to put it in for the second reading.
What, what did you say as a minimum, your recommendation?
$29,330.10.
And then the maximum?
It's $43,996.70.
Which is not significantly different than what Batesville has.
Right.
Start, redo that again, minimum, 29,330?
$29,330.10.
Forty-three, nine-nine. Six. And I, I would like you to consider rounding that off to, you know, the maximum to just go ahead and say 44,000.
I don't mind rounding it off.
The minimum to, you know, 29,400.
Okay.
So we're currently at this 26,598 and 39,898.
Currently?
True.
That's true. I'm going to bring it up, I'm bringing this up to the size that we are. And I'm bringing this up to the current comparison of city attorney salaries in, in Arkansas. Y'all agree with AC on rounding that up?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to include.
29,400, 44,000.
So those figures are going to be reflected on the second reading. All right.
Are you basing these, this range off population by all this, all this study you're doing is off population?
Right, and I told you how I come up with what I think the conservative estimate is on our population right now based upon water meters and the fact that 2.556 people are associated with that water meter right now. So I'm basing it off of that a little less than 10,000.
Not like a budget or tax base of these other cities. Sometimes I hate falling into the trap of comparing the towns of our size because you've got a lot of different factors that affect it. Are involved demographics, a college, interstate, a nuclear plant, some kind of electrical power plant.
Sure.
Corporate office. I mean, a lot of times the size of the city doesn't really mean the same. I would say Batesville, even though they do have a college, is probably about similar to us, haven't they got a race track?
I think Batesville's very similar to us.
Sure.
Arkodyelpi is probably very similar to us. You know.
Do you have prices listed for Arkodyelpi?
You know, I, you're, you're, you're just looking at what's provided, okay, by the Municipal League. So they.
So we only have one city our size that even has a number. Right?
Right.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of cells.
Right.
I'd say Mountain Home probably very similar to us. Listen.
I like your range draw.
Okay, it's good.
But we do that a lot on all these minimum and maximum range deals we've done over the past ten years trying to get salaries set. And we just compare them in population and not we generate funding. Big difference.
I have a question. I think this is amending a problem that should be amended. We already have one.
We already have an ordinance with?
Yeah, they don't need all the team.
And so I need to.
It needs to amend, you go, you go to 15 or one of them.
What does that mean, put it to city attorney?
Yeah, it's the city attorney. That's just what it's about. It's the city attorney.
One of the city clerk, one of the city.
And it says that his salary is set by resolution or in the budget.
Right. That's.
I'm saying this needs to amend that.
I thought that when we did that, we did the mayor, the city clerk and we left that.
We did, but this is prior to that.
You're saying that's before that.
This is already existing.
It needs to be amended.
2000, year 2000. Yeah, it's.
Is it an ordinance or is it?
Yes, it's an ordinance. It has to be. We, there's old ordinances even older than this, 4.8.
So can you send me that so I can repeal all the old ordinances?
Well, that was going to be my question, why didn't the ordinance, we did repeal that ordinance. We didn't.
We didn't do it.
This was just for city attorney.
You only did not from, from mayor.
This is already existing, this is competent, so we need to.
So it would have repealed anything relative to the mayor and city clerk, but not the attorney.
That was very.
Sorry, it was brand new.
With his, with his title, then he could just put on there to, and, and repeal all existing.
The list of.
You don't have to add it.
I'll fix that for the second reading. Okay? If Charlotte, I'll get with you and I'll fix that.
Yeah, send me the digital copy.
So section three, if y'all look down to section three, that's where it states that if our current city attorney reruns for second term, his salary remains the same. But if our second attorney retires or he runs against someone that beats him and is someone that has little or no experience but meets the state law minimum, well, he will probably come in and we will probably leave him at the minimum annual salary. Now, if our elected city attorney ran against, I don't know, somebody with more experience than him, then we could move him up closer to the max, that would be the council's priority. I don't know how you get anybody with more experience, I think Mike's been here twenty-eight. He's been here a long time.
A half a year.
Okay. So I think.
Forty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years, I don't know how you could get anyone with any more experience. So any questions on that in section three? Section three questions. All right, section four. Like Charlotte, Mike has met state, at twenty years he can retire a city attorney. So to do that, we have to adopt 24-12-120. If, if the current city attorney retired. Now, when I mentioned something, when I mentioned this to Mike, he's like, what are you trying to do? You're trying to run me off, I'm not ready to retire. And I said, let's just get it taken care of and be done with it. It'll have to be passed upon your retirement, let's just put it in the ordinance and be done with it. So you can read section four, we have to adopt that for him to be able to retire at twenty years. He, he's like Charlotte, he's already there. He could if he decided to. And it's already taken care of in this ordinance.
Now, she would qualify, not even though she hasn't been the city clerk for twenty years.
All my combined experience is for you to allow.
Right, yeah.
You know what they have, it's, it's different, different state law. It's different pieces of legislation.
Yeah.
Like Charlotte's, this clerk's, the clerks have a pretty sweet deal. They, they actually have spousal benefits. Is that correct, Charlotte? City attorneys, it's different state law, they only not have spousal benefits.
Right.
You know, it's just, it's different pieces of legislation. They probably have a better lobby than the city attorneys did.
You can find a home builder's lobby there.
I think this clerk also gets a.
Possibly, if the city ordered it.
So this, is this new verbiage for this of section four or what's on the books or do you know what's on the books? So how much, is this the state law, what you're just reading here in section four?
Section, section four. It's referring to state law. You're adopting that and by adopting it, we, he can retire. And, and he is a, he, he has enough time to retire.
Says half the rate of one-half his monthly salary to see during the last preceding year of service.
And that's state law.
Payable at the rate of one-half the salary payable to attorney at the time of his retirement.
So unfortunately, these rates wouldn't count until he's back to proceeding year of service, if he retired tomorrow.
Right.
Whatever, according to this chart here, it'd be payable whatever it is. I think yours, what's yours, Rock?
One-half. One-half?
During the last preceding year.
Last preceding year.
I mean, this chart here says he entitled retired at an annual retirement benefit during the remainder of his, uh, actual life. Payable at the rate of one-half the salary payable to city attorney at the time of his retirement.
If I retired, we'd have whatever my salary is today.
Rock says during the preceding year, I mean theoretically, based on this, you give a guy a raise for one month, he could retire at that salary.
That's true, but I'm sure you guys, unless I got very ill, I'm not going anywhere. I can't afford the insurance.
That is an added benefit that we, we add and other municipalities do too. We do supply him insurance. And we supply family insurance as well.
Well, I, I pay for the family. He's paid for my coverage and then the, the.
Thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent. Is that right? We pay thirty-two percent of this family, like we do.
He just has him and Gina going on.
Okay, if we'll. Any questions on section four? I'll leave it, I'll leave it in the second reading as it is presented here. I'll leave section three and then section.
Just, just for everybody's information, somebody I thought that my turn was up in 2022. I'm sure that I'm wrong, but is that this year?
I thought we three were together.
We did, you know, this.
That is the 2022.
The mayor is this year.
It's not either of them.
You run in 2022, right?
Maybe, 22, next.
I'm glad to be here for at least 2022, guys.
I just got re-lit.
I lost your grade once, President.
The only change you're making so far is that the maximum salary is gone.
So all three y'all are 2022? Am I?
No.
I mean, it's.
I'm, I'm synchronized with the mayor, I know.
He said I just got re-lit.
So it's Rod in AC.
Uh, it's me in AC.
It's in 2022. I thought you ran with all of y'all.
I have Charlie in my office, I wonder.
You run with a weird run.
I apologize, it's an election, we found out with the mayor, it's picture.
I can almost hear you.
I think you're watching your wife crack early.
Can we move on?
Do I say?
No. I'm still not through discussing.
I only got four sections on mine.
That's all we have, but I want to go back to section two. All right, so section two, our city attorney currently is at 33,248. That's reflected in the Municipal League report. I would, I would like to put, I've calculated, we need to have him at least at the, at the midpoint and that should be $36,449.
Are you sure that's accurate, Tom? Is that, okay, you're right, okay, sorry.
So the, so the number he's at, the number we have the city attorney at right now is 33,248. I think he needs to be moved to the midpoint of the salary range, which would be $36,449. I want to put that figure in on section two and include it on the second reading.
Hey, the number again?
Obviously you're not.
36,449.
You don't want to wait till budget, does it matter?
We still need to pass the ordinance, is that what?
Allows it to be.
Yeah, right.
Thirty-six what's, what, since we have, since we rounded off the minimum and maximum, do we not need to redetermine the midpoint?
Tell me what, tell me what it needs to be.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six five.
Thirty-six five.
All right.
I like that.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to you at $36,500 on section two.
I expect a lot more out of you.
All right.
I'm trying to figure out a way to get away from that. A lot more time over here.
We've got an office.
And that is another conversation, I mean.
Not right now. I'm not still counsel forum.
Go ahead, second.
What is it?
We have a motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Nobody, nobody make a motion, I make a motion to put this on for first reading by Todd Longland.
Now we have a motion, second, ten seconds.
By Todd Longland, changes as discussed, which were the setting of the minimum and maximum and we'll make changes to what is necessary for the ordinance. Repeal and vice versa.
Yes, current.
Yes. All right, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Pal?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
An ordinance establishes salary benefits for the elected city attorney for the city of Arkansas.
Thank you. Department reports and questions from council. Got a couple of them scattered out there.
I want to thank the street department for the dogwood work. I want to thank the street department for that street sweeper that come down through Webster Oaks. You know, for all these years I've been down cleaning it with my kids, the curb. And I went out there one day and I looked, like it's never been that clean. I mean, that thing does a really good job. And my, my neighbor called and was thanking me and I was like, I don't know who did it.
If you talk to him, if you talk to him really sweet, he'll reverse that suction and blow all that candy that he picked up from the fridge.
Yeah, I think you should decorate the street sweeper and it's the very last thing in parade.
How's that, Rob?
That prompted Dennis to get up, I'm not sure.
I would encourage you to have your neighbors not going after the street anymore.
You know, when you're in a life of the fish, that's a precarious position. When you go around acting like you're the little police of the neighborhood. I mean, that's not my position.
We had one of those once. Dennis had a question.
I agree with you, Dennis. And his name is Steve Tedford. You can go over and visit with him anytime you want.
Doesn't like talking to Steven.
It's not the first time.
True.
At the corner of Daisy and Lincoln's, there's a big bush growing there and my mother's going to get killed trying to pull out in the road. You know about that.
He, yeah, this is, this is the year of the war on drainage issues and, and overgrowth and drainage issues. And I want to commend you, sir, as I did yesterday whenever it was, on the creek behind, running alongside the senior citizen activity center. As, as you know, the first one, they, they got taken care of, it was the one between the two bridges. Now they moved across the bridge. And if you haven't noticed, you drive over it just to see it. There's nothing there, all that strut, all that corrosion. True, yeah. So along with our, waging war on drainage issue. Appreciate that. Anything else for Dennis? Street? Or the department heads, anybody? Only once. Uh, council forum.
No, I will just redirect it with your pal's conversation to council forum.
I got you. You got it.
Can I have it now?
You know, we're in it. It's in it.
You know, it might be that when you have a city attorney that's been there twenty-eight years, you know, we could be part of the retirement plan and he continue on. If, if that's the case, I mean, it would behoove us not to pay him retirement, which just increases the salary and, and keep him. So it's just something to think about. Right now, I just want my ordinance passed and we can talk about it later.
Anything else?
You can set some budget study session.
We do. Budget study session meetings, we have one on this morning, and here's what we would like to offer you, this council. And I'll let Mr. Gary read those aloud. And I would encourage you to make, I know time is important, everybody, you get families and issues, but this is a tremendously important part of what we do. And let your nine members of the choir know that if you can make, if you make them all up, it'd be fantastic. you make them all up, it'd be fantastic if we get this done, and we move on, and we get approved, and we're ready to rock and roll. As you know, we have adopted, we have a temporary budget adopted already, but we think with these study session scheduled this way, then we can get them. With that.
Before you do that, um, can I just make one statement?
Sure.
Regarding next meeting that you're gonna have?
Yes, sir.
We had a, an exit interview with legislative audit, and they, for the operating audit, we have issued the responses to the findings, there was a, um, there was a reportable finding that was mayor and I that we responded to, these are potential, that we can see, we have to a little rock and do some further explanation on. And then the, we had a second, uh, internal control efficiency, which was an audit, a reportable finding that was solely mayors, had to do with contracting parks department or the pre-vest, and we all know what happened. And then as the supplemental findings, the mayor and I had four, and then there was some minor, uh, cleanup findings, there were seven of those that are just for finance offices, so they have been responded to, and I'll do a full report of that.
No worries, went to a little rock to explain the.
We have not, so the supplemental findings are the ones that have the potential to be requested.
We're not supposed to talk about them until y'all receive your copies.
We will, I'll bet they are. I just wanted you to know that there were some that, uh, I will get them in the process.
Which we can expect that in. The next.
Next.
Well, y'all will be receiving yours.
You'll, you'll get yours from the mound, yes.
We have to wait until y'all receive it to hopefully announce it.
That would be curious now.
But we have to hopefully announce yours, not before you get your copies. See it yourself.
The issue is that you be a train manager over the next few weeks, you should be one.
Okay, Bates, ma'am.
Yep, uh, so we discussed it this morning, the department meetings, and we are all in agreement, and we're very much hoping you all can make these meetings. So our first available study session that we came up with was day after tomorrow night, Wednesday, the eighth of January, at six P M, studying water sewer street.
Water sewer and street.
Uh-huh. Then we don't have another one until the next week.
Sixteen?
Two, the next week, right, six P M, all of these are at six P M. January fourteenth, Parks Planning General.
January the fourteenth?
Yes, it's Tuesday.
Now, I consider the fifteenth? That's a, that's a fire meeting, no?
There was.
Oh. Is it?
It's a fourteen.
We left it, but we took you off of it.
That's right, that's why, so fire, we can't make it.
There's three, yeah.
Right, so, so the fourteenth.
I'm no good the fourteenth.
Our, Parks Planning General.
You're no good the fourteenth either, too?
Because I thought last year I was the only one hearing.
Right, right.
We called that.
Dean Ralphie handling.
We called that the naming budget, yeah.
And then the sixteen.
I can't even hear the eighth, if anybody cares.
And then the sixteen, budget, fire, police.
Yes.
And animal control.
Uh, I'd like giving you the, uh, the fifteenth.
I don't think anybody else could.
You see, you said something before, it was fire and police and whales.
Animal control.
And that was on what?
Sixteen.
I don't think the fifteenth's off, the, was there, was there a director that, I think fifteens can be an option, I think.
The fifteen, or Park, Police, and.
Can you do the fifteen?
Parks. Would that be?
Wednesday night. Sure.
Me and Tammy go to church on Wednesday.
We're doing it on Wednesday night. Do what, differently, on Wednesday night?
Yes, you go on Wednesday night.
I'm okay with Tuesday the fourteenth. I mean, if we're trying to work something around me and AC.
Tuesday the fourteenth. Okay, we're already moving on from that.
We haven't.
Well, we stayed with the fourteenth for Parks Planning General.
Look, look, let's go back, start with, let's go to the eighth, is that the first one?
Yes.
We can be here on the eighth.
After tomorrow night.
Okay, that's, that one was leave.
Fourteen, Tuesday, fourteen.
Tuesday, fourteenth.
Is the parks in what?
Parks Planning General.
That's a fire meeting?
That's a huge one.
That's a big one.
Wait, you said two, Ken or Ken?
Ken, you got a, you got a fire meeting?
So Tuesday night.
Fire meeting, but I think I did miss the fire meeting.
Appreciate that. I think that's.
I'm for Rod. I'm on the radio.
I think we can do it fifteenth, just like we're doing it on the eighth.
That might be a missed two, not church nights.
Mayor's, get together.
Rod, we're gonna be moving your building on fire meeting, we don't want to miss that.
That's why he's coming to the budget session, Ken.
But we can move the department even, if we had to, that was just.
Parks Planning General.
Do it on Wednesday, Saturday, Tuesday.
Ken's gonna be on.
I'll be on, I'll be on the radio for fourteen.
We can make fifteen.
We can make fifteen, we did that, so that's three.
You can make fifteen, all of them, so now we're.
But it doesn't have to be parks, is what I'm saying.
Right.
You can remove parks and swap it with something. Right?
And you're gonna swap parks for animal control?
For fire, or, did somebody fire it?
Fire.
So I will do fire on fifteenth.
Yeah.
How's that?
And switch to parks and police on Friday.
Parks, police, and animal control.
Damn, good.
What now?
Say it again. Fourteenth, there's parks and police and animal control.
Not in fourteen.
I'm sorry, the fifteenth.
Parks and police.
Police and animal control. This one almost is smooth this morning, by the way.
We'll, we'll.
Thursday, I remember when we placed police and fire.
Who does? Will be all right. I thought I said it. As long as you know what you're getting. We're on the fifteenth, the fourteenth, and then you're, and then we're.
Now it's all ten.
All right.
We moved the fourteenth stuff to the fifteenth, and then we took parks out, put fire in.
Just, just. Just, just, just keep it away, it was Park, Plan, General, I'll be here on fifteenth, on the deal.
Parks, Plan, General on the fifteenth, and then fire, police, and animal control is on the second.
Yeah, and then on that, that Thursday, the sixteen, we will just make, uh, try to come up with, I mean, a special call meeting to have a stick with about the budget.
I mean, we got people saying that they have animals and fire.
Okay, do it again, so everybody's gonna say that. Eighth. The eighth.
The eighth is water sewer street.
You have to have your, have everybody else do it.
At six P M. And the fifteenth, Parks Planning General.
Yep.
Parks Planning General.
Mm-hmm, and then the sixteenth, parks, animals. And then on the Saturday night, for the special call meeting to adopt the budget.
After the sixteen.
If it's worked out.
Did anybody else?
The sixteen. Whenever, we just don't have any. It's adopted, these are study sessions, not every.
So the eight, fifteen, one sixteen, that's our three.
Yes.
They're gonna be food at these meetings.
Yes, yes.
Given by businesses, though.
No, no, it's.
That was just.
No, it's spotlight.
Spot, spot.
We're on your spotlight.
Yeah, that's your tone, and, uh, I go suit.
Yeah, we're good. I go suit.
Okay.
Okay, that's incorrect, that's good, I'll send those out to me.
Yes. And we appreciate you coming to those, those are hugely important, you don't, you don't want, you don't want. Who was it, Ralph, no, it was just Daniel and, who was it, said they've been like. Was it Ralph and Daniel, or go, so they take care of? We ordered last year. Anything else from council? If not.
I'll make a motion with your adjournments, right?
Your adjournments, thank you. Where'd they come from?
I got answers now. Well, I did this, I think two years ago, I brought it right here, I have a party out there, I had Tanya, back in the day, basketball, 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 at, playing hills, six o'clock, basketball, home versus. Kind of see that.
Okay, you did a slide yard.
Well, I'll make sure you take.
We're gonna start.